Thank you very much and good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to very warmly welcome you to our public hearing on the MiFID review. It's a great pleasure to see so many of you joining us here today online. At ESMA, we are committed to ensure regular engagement with our stakeholders, as we believe that cooperation and transparency are critical to our work. This is the reason why we've organised this public hearing on our recent proposals for technical standards, exactly three months after the entry into force of the revised MiFID. Before getting down to these sometimes quite technical issues, I would like us to take a step back and to remember the ideas underlying the MiFID review and more broadly, how it fits into the wider policy agenda towards stronger European capital markets. I'm sure that all of you who are coming to this hearing today need not reminding or convincing on the urgency of making progress in building more effective and attractive capital markets in the EU. This was the title of ESMA's own position paper, contributing to this policy debate on the future of the European Capital Markets Union, which we published one month ago. As you may have read, the paper looks at three dimensions of our capital markets. First, European citizens and investors, so those who create the demand for goods and services, but also supply the essential capital for investments. We wanted to focus on the need of citizens to have interesting savings and investment opportunities through engagement in capital markets. Second dimension is Europe's companies. They form the backbone of our growth, but for that they require funding to implement their business ideas. And third, Europe's overarching regulatory and supervisory framework, the rules that govern how we interact in the markets, that ensure fairness and provide equal opportunities. Around these three dimensions, we've developed 20 recommendations, which we believe will help to further strengthen our capital markets. I'm certainly not going to touch on the 20 recommendations today. That's not the purpose of this hearing. But I would like to highlight some of the key proposals in this third area of regulation and supervisory framework, which is about improving the EU's regulatory agility, supervisory consistency and international competitiveness. And I believe that is directly related to today's topic, the MiFID review. In our recommendation 15, which we called "Modernising the EU's Regulatory Framework for Financial Services", we call for enhanced clarity and simplicity of EU regulation. As such, we propose that the EU regulation should be foremost principles-based at the level one, focusing on the strategic choices but leaving room for level two and three in guidance, that can then be delivered by bodies such as ESMA. This will significantly reduce the time to update the regulatory framework, making it overall more agile and able to adapt. An illustration in the current context is the obligation to make market data available on a reasonable commercial basis, where the principles are in MiFID now and are supplemented by specific elements of technical implementation. We also recommend in the paper the use of regulations rather than directives to implement political choices. And we certainly, in that context, welcome that some provisions previously in the directive in MiFID II were moved to the regulation. For example, the definition of multilateral systems. Having such common definitions across Europe without differences creeping in through national transposition helps, in our view, to support consistent implementation and supervision, creating a level playing field. In our recommendation 16, which we labelled "Reviewing Financial Regulation with a More Holistic Vision", we call for streamlining the European rules for financial markets. Without losing sight of the issues and vulnerabilities to address, we must aim for a simpler single rulebook to extend, to an extent followed by the level one text. In this regard, the MiFID review introduces some welcome changes. For example, the shift from the current double volume cap to a single volume cap. Also empowers trading venues to apply suspensions directly without the interim step of NCA approval. Similarly, applying the MiFID review reduces the overall number of pre-trade transparency waivers, notably in the non-equity space, and thus again simplifying the landscape. This recommendation also entails the overall reduction of reporting burdens for entities operating in Europe. This is, for example, at the core of the revised approach to post-trade transparency, which set thresholds replacing annual calculations. This is a significant implication for market participants, all of you, and also ESMA. In a third example, I just want to briefly touch on our recommendation on evaluating direct supervision at EU level. With the most recent MiFID review, ESMA has been not only entrusted with the authorisation and supervision of consolidated tape providers, but also with a selection, a particularly challenging new mandate for us. Data reporting service providers and consolidated tape providers are but two examples of the various different direct supervisory mandates that ESMA has. We've adapted well to each of these mandates recently and will certainly do so for the consolidated tape providers. We're trying to create appropriate approaches to the supervision of these different mandates and certainly want to show that one size does not necessarily fit all when it comes to supervision. Therefore, our heterogeneous supervisory experiences illustrate how different supervisory approaches at ESMA level can work and can be adapted to the specificities of different capital market sectors. Let me now turn to the specific objectives of the MiFID review. Overall, the review aims at adapting the existing framework to current market realities, to simplify applicable rules and to pave the way for the further integration of European capital markets, often times in line with ESMA's various opinions and recommendations that we've provided over the last years. The review touches upon some key components of the European Commission's 2020 Capital Markets Union Action Plan, focusing on three policy areas, which are first, to improve transparency and availability of market data; second, to improve the level playing field between execution venues; and third, to ensure that EU market infrastructures can remain competitive at international level. One of its primary objectives is the creation of consolidated tapes in the EU. At the current juncture, trading and trading data is fragmented across the continent. Investors would need to approach each marketplace separately and consolidate this information. Only then can they obtain a comprehensive picture of the trading landscape and be able to evaluate market quality or compare the prices that are asked and offered at different exchanges. By contrast, with the MiFID review proposals, investors are expected to gain easier access to market data at a lower cost through the establishment of the EU consolidated tapes. Indeed, by collecting and centrally aggregating individual price feeds and making the resulting tape available on a reasonable commercial basis, consolidated tapes will enable investors to make vector-informed investment decisions. ESMA will play a key role in the establishment of three consolidated tapes for bonds, for equity instruments, shares and ETFs, and for OTC derivatives. We're preparing for this role meticulously, very conscious of the fact that our decisions in this space may have a significant impact on EU capital markets. The transition towards the revised MiFID rules is another area where our voice as ESMA is crucial. We acknowledge this transition is challenging. Most of us will still remember the implementation of MiFID II and MiFID in January 2018, which required at the time enormous efforts. This time around, we can expect the process to be smoother, as the most recent review is of lesser magnitude and as the existing rules can continue to apply in the interim. So we are keen to take a pragmatic approach and make this transition as efficient and predictable as possible. Now, we all know that the broad-brush approach of the transitional regime provided for in Article 54.3 of MiFID needs to be completed with more detail on its practical application. This is the reason why we have worked in close collaboration with the Commission to issue public guidance at the end of March. We are conscious that there are still many questions out there. You can rest assured that more clarity is due to come from ESMA. In the coming weeks, we will use our interactive single rulebook to provide more granular guidance. In particular, we will indicate for each article amended by the MiFID review whether the amended article will only apply at a later date and clarify the application of related delegated acts during the transition period. We've also launched an in-depth analysis of our existing level three measures and are aiming to publish updated guidance in the coming months. This will obviously evolve over time and as existing technical standards are revised and new level two mandates are fulfilled. I'm confident that NCAs, who we are working with very closely in this endeavour, will in their supervisory activities be mindful of the evolutive nature of the MiFID rulebook during this interim phase. We encourage all of you to reach out to ESMA if you encounter issues in applying the new rules. We are certainly committed to continue to assess these requests and will provide explanations and clarity wherever we can and wherever it's needed. One month ago, we published the first two MiFID review consultation packages at the core of today's public hearing alongside a more targeted paper on amendments for commodity derivatives. We are aiming to adopt the final reports linked to these consultations by the end of this year. In July, i.e. next month, very soon, we will see a second wave of consultation papers covering equity transparency, flags for non-equity transparency, notifications for systemic internalisers and circuit breakers, as well as a separate paper on order execution policies. We will also consult on transaction reporting and order book record-keeping in October. The final reports for these consultations are expected in March next year, obviously after assessing very carefully the responses that we will get to the forthcoming consultations. Last but not least, towards the end of this year and the beginning of next, or the beginning of next, we will propose a second review of RTS II with a specific focus on transparency for derivatives and packaged orders amongst others. And there we will aim for the final reports in September next year. I'm sure most of you are already aware of this timeline, which is available on our website, by the way, but I still wanted to outline it orally to highlight our collective endeavours that will continue over the next 18 months. Speaking about collective efforts and now turning to the topics for today, I'm very glad to be joined by Rodrigo Buena Ventura, who is chairing the Market Standing Committee, and by Ami Taipale, the Chair of ESMA's Data Standing Committee. Welcome, Rodrigo and Ami. They will each briefly outline the main changes arising from the MiFID review before experts from ESMA will present our concrete proposals. We are looking forward to an interactive debate and you are very much encouraged to ask questions either by raising your hand in the application or in the chat. The morning session will be devoted to the reform of the transparency for bonds, the proposed new standards on the provision of market data on a reasonable commercial basis, a very hot topic, I'm aware, and the revision of the rules on the supply of reference data. The afternoon session will then focus on the standards related to the consolidated tape providers and other data reporting service providers, including the assessment criteria for the CTP selection procedures. Finally, I want to remind you that today's hearing is recorded and will be made available on our website. With these words, I would like to conclude and hand over to the MSC Chair, who will introduce his section. Rodrigo, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Verena. Welcome to everybody. I see more than 200 people connected. It reminds me of the first open hearing of the MiFID II. MiFID II at that time, that we had to rent the cinema in Paris. We wouldn't fit in ESMA's premises. So it's very good to see such a big participation. It's a pleasure to be here today. Well, as Verena mentioned, the MiFID review is a very important step for ESMA and I think for all market participants and the market as a whole. And it happens every 10 years, 2014 and 2024. So it's not something that happens every day. We need to really get it right. So that's why we have put a lot of effort on this consultation. And it's also important, as Verena was saying, in the context of the Capital Markets Union, trying to foster and develop European capital markets more. And that's why I think this is a really relevant moment. So in this morning session, we will touch on three aspects that are central to our work to the interest of stakeholders and market participants, and all are around enhancing market transparency and data availability. So I would like to give a very brief overview of those topics before we go deeper into each of them with presentations by ESMA colleagues and with Q and A sessions specific for each segment. So the first agenda item that we will cover regards the new pre and post-trade transparency framework for non-equities. There, as many of you know, MiFID introduces separate requirements for derivatives and other non-equity instruments and with a special focus on bonds. And it also envisages a different timeline for the different level two mandates that ESMA has to fulfil, so that bonds and other instruments will be delivered first and derivatives in a second step. And as such, the discussion of today will focus mainly on the bond regime. Contrary to the existing, the previous pre-trade transparency regime that applies equally across all trading venues, the revision in MiFID has limited these obligations to trading venues that are operating either central order book or periodic auctions. And it also removes pre-trade obligations that previously applied to the systematic internalises. So the changes in the basis in the level one are quite substantial. However, the main change in what keeps us busy today, this first section, so the pre and post-trade transparency and in particular the post-trade transparency regime, is dealing with a kind of an overhaul of the previous design that was based on an instrument-by-instrument approach. Many of you, I see many familiar names in the list of participants connected, will remember the infamous acronym of EBI and COFI. And now the approach is going to different, five actually, five categories of bonds. Level one is tasking ESMA with three core tasks: definition of what is a liquid bond, definition of what is a medium, large and very large transaction, and the specification of the maximum delay for price and volume to be published after the transaction, for each of those categories, of course. So we have developed extensive work, I hope that is recognised by market participants, with a lot of quantitative basis, so data-based analysis that is supporting the proposals that we are consulting upon. And we expect, of course, to further define those shortly with the input of market participants. And for that, this open hearing is a key piece, of course. Secondly, agenda, you have the new regulatory technical standards under Article 13, which deals with the obligation to make pre and post-trade transparency, sorry, pre and post-trade data available at a reasonable commercial basis. This topic has drawn considerable attention for both market data providers and clients. And I would qualify this as a high-voltage topic according to the type of discussions that we have seen. So I hope that we can also get meaningful input today. Here, the basic level one approach starts with recognising that data is an essential good in capital markets, in the whole investment chain. And therefore, access to those data is critical, although the costs for generating and distributing meaningful data should be duly taken into account when developing the regulation on a reasonable commercial basis. So the draft that we have published, the draft RTS on reasonable commercial basis, aims to achieve what I would call a delicate balance between the interest of providers and the interest of users of market data. But it is also true that we need to navigate in a narrow territory, which is the one that has been defined by level one. It transforms the existing ESMA guidelines, so level three into technical standards, level two to further strengthen the enforceability of those principles. And the draft RTS in that context of the level one tries to help to ensure nondiscriminatory and cost-based pricing on one extreme, while allowing fees to differ between different user groups. Of course, within a particular user group, the fees must be the same, must be nondiscriminatory and must be related to the costs of data production plus a reasonable margin. It's also not to be overlooked the fact that the RCB approach applies also to providers of consolidated tapes. So we need to also ensure a balanced outcome on this because a high-cost tape would not be attractive for market participants, of course. But without a viable business, the might not be tapes at all. So again, a thin line to walk on this matter. And finally, the last part of our morning session will be dedicated to the consultation on the RTS on reference data reporting. I would expect a calmer debate probably here, more technical, but also importantly, what we normally refer to as RTS 23 in the jargon. We all know instruments, reference data are critical components of the whole MiFID framework with more and more automation going on and the need for quality data and strong identifiers. So originally, the reference data was envisaged in the previous version of MiFID, as a complement to transaction reporting for the purpose of monitoring market integrity and market monitoring in general, mainly by supervisors. But the revised MiFID envisages also that reference data is collected to complement or to help transparency obligations and notably to complement the quote and trade data published by trading venues and investment firms. This is a new use case, so it requires a careful review of the technical standard to ensure that that reference data also is fit for purpose for transparency use. And in this case, even more so than many others, the technical input by market practitioners will be essential to make the right design and make it workable for these new purposes. So that is a robust system overall. And finally, the revised mandate under Article 27 also requires ESMA to consider the alignment of RTS 23, the one that I just mentioned, with international standards and reporting rules under EMEA and the SFTR. So while the commonly applicable RTS 23 already relies on ISO standards and are for the most part aligned with EMEA, this review is offering also an opportunity to perform a fresh assessment and to update the requirements in line with some recent national developments, such as the one on the identifier for OTC derivatives. And this will potentially further improve the standardisation and the harmonisation of regulatory reporting in the EU, which is a goal that, of course, we all share. So I stop here, but before starting with the first presentation, I would like to really encourage you to use today's hearing to ask questions, to raise any concerns that you may have, to, you know, put forward any proposal because we really place a lot of importance on this type of interaction and we would like to keep the session as interactive as possible. So without any other content, I would hand over to the ESMA colleagues back in Paris. I think it's Jose who will present the proposal for the RTS, or maybe it's Ami that is also in the meeting now. But back to you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you very much, Rodrigo and Verena, for setting out the scene for us this morning. We will then look firstly at the amendment to RTS II and obviously the concrete proposals that we have in the first CP in this first part of the morning. What we will cover here, firstly, it's the mandate, in particular, how we deal with the different timelines in relation to pre and post-trade transparency requirements, and also the newly introduced separation between bonds and derivatives in two different articles. And secondly, we will go through our main considerations, really the focus points that we looked for when we developed the RTS. And then finally, of course, we will go through the main proposals in the CP. In the interest of time, I want to leave plenty of time for discussion. What we'll do is that we will focus on the new bond deferral regime. We'll go through our proposals for the liquidity determination, the different sized thresholds and the time durations of each of the categories. Of course, lately, when we open the floor for questions, we can cover any part of the CP that you would like. So starting off with the mandate, as just described, the MiFID review makes a separation between what is the post-trade transparency regime for bonds and the post-trade transparency regime for derivatives. For that purpose, it creates a new article that solely covers derivatives, but we will leave that aside from today's discussion. What we will do is that we'll focus on the bond regime, whether new MiFID requires ESMA to specify a number of different aspects. So firstly, this was already in the previous mandate, so we have to set out the details that have to be made available to the public and what is considered as real time. So what is as close to real time as technically possible? These are mandates, well done to you, that were already in the previous MiFID. Then we'll look at the liquidity calibration. And here, there's a newly introduced definition of liquidity that focuses for bonds on its assessment according to the issuance size. Then we have to set out the size and the duration for the bond deferral in accordance with the five different categories. These categories have already been determined in level one. They set a maximum deferral regime that we also need to set and also include the supplementary deferral, which now is strictly limited to sovereign bonds. Finally, the CP also covers other instruments, so structural finance products and emission allowances. So this CP also adds our proposals on those regimes as well. The deadline is nine months, so we will endeavour to finalise our approach by the end of the year, so by December 2024. Now, moving on to the next, we also have a new mandate for pre-trade transparency. Here, there's really no separation between bonds and derivatives. Nevertheless, what we decided to do was to, we thought it would be useful to tackle transparency per instrument. So we will bundle the post and pre-trade transparency requirement for bonds and we will be later on giving our proposals on the post and pre-trade transparency for derivatives. So we're essentially going to separate this mandate into two. So as already been said, there's a new scope of pre-trade transparency with only now applying to central limit order books and periodic auctions. There's also no pre-trade transparency requirements for SIs. The mandate requires us to first look at the temporary suspension. This is already embedded in the current legislation, where we need to set out a threshold of liquidity where the trigger, which triggers the temporary suspension. There have not been changes to this mandate. We have to also look at the details to be published under the new pre-trade regime. So now it is limited to other book and auction trading systems. We need to define their characteristics and we need to also define what kind of details have to be published. Lastly, the MiFID review also introduced changes to the waiver regime, obviously with the deletion of the size specific to the instruments, so the ESDI, and also considering that there's a new definition of liquidity, that definition should also apply to the waiver regime. In addition, considering the move to static thresholds across the board, In addition, considering the move to static thresholds across the board, we also thought it would make sense to review the LIS thresholds and set new static thresholds, which would not then require any any further annual annual calculations. We will cover these proposals also in a second. Finally, just a little note that still to come, obviously, I mentioned the deferral regime for for derivatives, but we will also be looking at the new at the RTS for package orders and the embedded ECB exemption that we have in 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 level one, that will be addressed in the new consultation paper for the eighteen month mandate for the derivatives deferral regime. Then moving on then to our analysis and our concrete proposals. So we we focused very much on the three different the three different aspects that we had to 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 set for the deferral regime. So number one, what is a liquid bond? So that has to be based on the issuance size, as already mentioned. Secondly, what is a medium, what is a large and what is a very large size in terms of the different categories? And then finally, what should be the applicable deferral duration for each of the categories? In terms of then our reasoning and our objectives for this exercise, what we what we consider very carefully, our intention, I think we consider that goes hand in hand with the with the mandate that was entrusted to us, is to increase overall real time transparency available in the market. Surely, obviously, we we need to get the balance right. So certainly, on the basis of our analysis was also the clear intention to provide an adequate balance between ensuring real time transparency whilst obviously at the same time ensuring that large orders are appropriately protected. Finally, all we wanted to do was also to achieve all of this as much as possible by making the regime simpler. So we make a few proposals in that sense, for example, to 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 bundle the existing six bond types into into three. So really, we we tried with the level one that we had in in our hands to try to further simplify the regime as well. As also already mentioned in the introductory remarks, we we've made a quite an extensive qualitative quantitative assessment. The analysis used transaction data from Feters, which is the the system that collects the data that we receive for the purpose of the transparency calculations. We looked at the years between 2021 and 2023. Their 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 conclusions were very similar. And lastly, what we focused our analysis on was on the trading volume and also the number of trades. So we tried to make an analysis on both of these of these metrics. Now we can move to our actual proposals and we will start with liquidity. So here, what we did, we looked at the number of eyes and so obviously taking the new definition into account. Issuance size is the key, is what we should look for. We looked at the number of eyesings, we looked at the total volume in three different eyes size buckets. So we looked at 500 million, up to 500 million, above 500 million, but below 1 billion and above 1 billion. And we looked at the size buckets and we tried to analyze how much trading would go into each of these of these buckets. What we tried to do then in terms to to simplify the regime, as I already mentioned, was to bundle these three, the the bond times into three different categories. So firstly, we bundled sovereign bonds with other public bonds. In corporates, we included convertible bonds and other bonds. And then lastly, covered bonds are covered as a separate tab. There's also a reason for this that I will cover just in in a second, why we we thought we should we should have covered bonds as a as a separate bond type. So from the data analysis, what we noted is that taking sovereigns as as the first instrument, about forty three percent of the issuance is above or equal to 1 billion, but that actually catered for almost all of the trading volume, so ninety eight percent of of the volume. So we we thought that this would make a good threshold for for liquidity and therefore we we have set the threshold for at or above 1 billion issuance size for for sovereign bonds. Then we look at corporate, but noted that only eleven percent of the issuance is equal or above 1 billion, and that counts for roughly forty percent, forty two percent of of the volume. Sovereigns and corporates trade differently, so we thought it would be useful to to look at a lower issuance size and see what would be the the effects on on the on the trading volume. So decreasing to 500 million, we noticed that twenty nine percent of the issuance would be above this threshold, but that would count for over eighty percent of of the volume. So our conclusion was that it would, the liquidity would be well captured at the lower level than sovereigns, so not at the 1 billion, but rather at the 500 million. Then a note on covered bonds. So there's a recital on the on the MiFID review that requires us to use a criteria set out on the Commission delegated regulation that has to to deal with liquidated coverage for credit institutions. So we looked at that that legal framework and the threshold that is set there for for very liquid covered bonds is 250 million, and therefore we took that threshold and included in in our analysis. So in summary, for sovereign bonds, the liquidity would be 1 billion, for corporates, 500 million, and for covered bonds, 250 million. So this is the liquidity. So then moving to the size thresholds and the deferral duration. So I'll make some overall remarks now for for this part. And and then we will look at the different at the different instruments. So to some some just overall thoughts before going to into each of the specific thresholds. The main objective is to enhance transparency and subject more transactions to real time post-trade publication. This is what we we believe it should be the objective of RTS 2 review. So our starting point of any analysis would be to ensure that the largest portion of transactions and and also volume would be either below category one, therefore subject to real time publication, or in categories one and two. So that would mean publication after fifty minutes or at the end of the day, depending on on the liquidity of the bond. Also, in addition, we we also want to give protection for very large orders. So we believe that the last category, so the very large, should only account for a very small proportion of trades. Of course, this would be very large, very large transactions, so they would still account for a significant proportion of of the volume considering their size. But in terms of the number of trades, we thought it would be very important to to have a very low number of trades in these last bucket. Then in terms of our thoughts on the actual deferral durations. In order to further simplify the regime and also to enhance more more transparency, we we decide to set the deferral price regime for categories three and four below the maximum that was allowed in level one. The idea was to to balance between between the information available to 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 investors, so ensure that there is enough information available, but also at the same time mitigating the the undo risk. That's why the decision we made was to reduce the end, the the price deferral duration to end of trading day, but keep the maximum, the maximum allowed volume deferral to one week and two weeks respectively for categories three and four. Also, as a reminder, ESMA will be able to to review these deferred durations. There's provision that allows us to do, always with the aim of decreasing them gradually. We will, of course, take this into account. But first, obviously, we need to analyze how the final approach will work in practice, how how the the market adapts to the new regime and only then we will make a decision on whether or not to 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 decrease the deferral duration. So this is something that will be becoming at some point, but certainly this would not be something that we will be looking to do at short term because we need to 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 see how how the how the the implementation goes in terms of the new deferral regime for bonds. So those were the remarks I wanted to to mention here. So then quickly on the thresholds for sovereign bonds, we set up to 15 million for categories one and two, so for the medium size, then up to 50 million for the large size for sovereign bonds, and then very large size, we set the pressure at 50 billion, 50 million, sorry. If we move then quickly, we can cover now the corporate bonds, where also we we analyzed and we noticed a different way of of trading between both. So for corporates, we went for smaller thresholds, so up to 1 million for real time transparency. Anything up to five would be considered, or up to five would be a medium size, so on the category one and two. Then categories three and four, so the medium size up to 15 million and above 15 million, that would be the the very large, very large size. Then lastly, for covered bonds, again, with the aim of simplifying the the regime and as we 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 noted that there has not been a very big change in terms of of the way it is it is traded and the distribution of of trades. There is a difference, but not huge. So we decided to set the same thresholds as sovereign bonds in order to simplify the regime and have the same thresholds here. So again, this would be fifteen for the medium, fifty for the the large and above 50 million for the very large trades. Then moving quickly to pre-trade and how we said, trying to look here. So for the pre-trade transparency, so just very quickly, as as mentioned, there is a reduced scope. Our aim was to move to to static thresholds, so no more annual calculations. We also aim to simplify the the regime, so we kept the bond, the bond split that we did for for the the deferral duration. And we 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 noted also the pre-trades are applicable to to SI. So what we did is that we set the 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 large in scale pre-trade pressure for the lowest size on the default, so as you remember, five for sovereigns, other public bonds and covered bonds, and then 1 million for corporates, convertibles and other bonds. One last point on other thresholds, so on other instruments on the next slide, just to finalize. We also set the 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 thresholds for both ETCs and ETNs for emission allowances and for structural finance products. Again, our aim was to simplify the regime, so we took what we had on the current RTS 2, we made an analysis, and we kept roughly the same type of approach for for these instruments as well. So I think in terms of our proposals, I would leave it that. We'd be more than happy to to have your your views, your thoughts on on our proposals. Obviously, any question related to to the CP, as as I said, focus on the bond deferral regime in the in the interest of of time, to give plenty of 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 time for for to receive your comments, your your questions. We had two questions that just has a starting point, no need for you to to specifically answer to those. So are there any other metrics for the data analysis that we should be looking for? Is there any any other 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 quantitative analysis that we should we should do to to set the thresholds? And of course, what what is your views on the overall thresholds for the bond deferral regime? Another area maybe in terms of the implementation, whether there are any concerns with the implementation time, what are your views in terms of how long will it take to to implement the the regime? That will also be something that we'll be looking for. So I'll stop here and we'll open the floor to questions. And we can then start with Stefan, please. I'll maybe I'll collect two, three questions and then I'll answer those and then we we go from there. So Stefan, please, I think you'll be able to mute yourself and if you can or if you can and want to put the camera on, please feel free to do so.
Yes, hi, thank you. Stefan Malory from ING Bank, thank you for organizing this session. It's very interesting to see the analysis from your side and try to understand how you came through it. So thank you for that. The the first question I have is really on the medium category, where you came up for medium liquid, you came up with a fifteen minute deferral. And the question is how, why fifteen minutes? Because in a way, in the bond markets, fifteen minutes is as close as real time to, you know, there's not that many bonds would trade below fifteen minutes. So that's that was kind of a question for us because either it should be longer or it should be closer to, it's the equivalent to be real time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll, as I said, I'll collect a couple of questions and then I'll answer. So I see Alan, please.
Yes, it's Alan here from NucaDin in Denmark. I would like to ask you kindly if you could show page 11 one more time for the covered bonds. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Stefan, please, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I I I would have some, I would have some some comments. First, thank you very much for organizing that that open hearing. It's it's very precious for us to to be able to to exchange ahead of answering to the consultation. Yeah, I would have several comments. The first one is that the thresholds in in ESMA's study seem to be mostly based on the ground of the the share in issuances or in volumes for categories above and below the threshold. And so the thresholds are set to somehow optimize that kind of of share and optimize the the level of of transparency in the market. I'm afraid that in some cases, it may be some kind of circular thinking, of circular method, meaning that in in the balance between liquidity and transparency, I'm I'm not fully convinced that this method will optimize the balance between liquidity and transparency. And typically, maybe it would have some some value considering approaches based on the time for absorption of transactions. So how long does it take for the market to absorb a transaction in average? And and maybe thresholds could be determined to optimize that kind of indicator, not to maximize transparency. Because then you would truly optimize the balance between transparency and liquidity. My second comment would be on the issuance sizes that are proposed to determine what is liquid and what is not liquid. It's important that the issuance size that is being considered is not the initial issuance size, but the current issuance size, because especially member states, they often issue they often issue for one year on the same horizon to make it a benchmark. And so you may have, I don't know, one billion issued at the beginning of the program, but at the end of the program, you will have accumulated five billions being issued. My sub-comment would be that the one billion threshold for GOVs, you have to have in mind that it will capture a very, basically for some member states, it will capture none of their issuances. For some other member states, it will capture maybe a significant size or at least a decent size of their issuances. And for these member states, it would be, it would be good to focus the analysis on those member shares and truly to look at what can happen in times of crisis, in times of market stress. All the more as with the table that is being proposed in terms of transparency deferrals. The fact that for the medium, if I'm correct, for the medium size, ESMAs proposes to shorten the deferrals compared to the maximum the maximum deferrals that are permitted by level one. And having in mind that prices contain an information on volumes, it would really make sense to be very cautious and to refine the analysis, especially for those member states that issue sometimes below one billion, so smaller member states. Because in terms of time of market stress, it may be an issue for the trading of their bonds and for the spread of their depth. So that's it for the time being on my side.
Many thanks, Stefan. Maybe we'll take David's question now and then I'll provide a round of answers. David, please.
Thank you. And again, I echo my colleagues and peers, thanks for arranging this opportunity. My question, I've got two questions, they broadly come to the same thing. Level one in articulating the grounds for deferring publications expresses that liquidity providers should not be exposed to undue risk. I noticed that in your exposition of the determination of the proposed deferrals that you concentrated entirely on maximizing transparency. I wonder if you could advise to what extent and how you catered for the avoidance of undue risk. And secondly, the level one also articulates that ESMAs should develop draft regulatory technical standards for most of these things, including deferrals, after consulting the expert stakeholder group established to pursue to article twenty-two B two. And I am curious as to has the extent to which that has happened. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. So I'll try to provide some answers to all of these questions. So from Stefan, the question was around the medium category and why the fifteen minutes. So what we have in level one are the maximum durations. So what the level one text gives us is the five categories. And for each of the five categories, it notes the maximum duration for each of the different categories. So that's where the fifteen minutes and the end of day come from the medium size. So far, we have decided to keep the maximum allowed in these two categories. We thought as a starting point, it would make sense to do so. Obviously, increasing, we're not allowed to do because the level one sets the maximum. And we thought that at the first stage, keep the maximum allowed would be more appropriate. As also mentioned before, there is a provision in level one that allows ESMAs or requests ESMAs to look at the thresholds in the future with the aim at reducing the durations. And this is something that we intend to do when we analyze the effects of of the application of the regime. So that's really the reason why we kept the fifty minutes. So we thought keeping the maximum duration would be more appropriate at this time for this particular category.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Then Stefan, on the thresholds, I think your first comment related to that our analysis was based on the share of volume and whether each category would be above or below the threshold. And to optimize, we could look at the time it takes to absorb each transaction in order to optimize this indicator. So as I said, our data analysis was indeed focused on the volume and the number of trades. We'd be happy to look into this indicator. For that, we would very much welcome if you have any data that can show how we can measure this time to observe the transaction. We would be more than happy to look at it. Or if you have any concrete idea on specifically how we can look into this metric with the data available to us, we could definitely also look for that analysis. We're very much welcoming in the consultation responses for any data you have, any idea of how the analysis should be done, any other metrics, including this this indicator of time to observe the transactions. So we'd be more than happy to look at it and embed that analysis to what we already have. So again, if you, if you have any data to to show those indicators, we would be more than happy to receive and analyze it. On the issue side, you are absolutely right. So the idea is not to look at the initial issuance size, but the outstanding amount. So I think this is something that we included in the C P and we also ended to include at the R T S. But we will further emphasize that. So you are absolutely right in there. What we look for the issue size is not the initial amount, but the outstanding at the time of the transaction. Then your third point in terms of the thresholds. So we did look at the split between the different N C As between the different countries and the issue size. Obviously, there are some countries that stand out, there are some outliers. But in discussions with N C As, with the member states, we believe that the one billion would capture the most liquid bonds. And I think our analysis showed that it will cover at least some of each of the different of the different N C As bond issuances. Again, there are some outliers that was taken into account, but we thought that it would achieve the right balance between having the right threshold and the number of issues that it would that it would subject to transparency as a liquid issuance. And also another thing that was taken into consideration was actually your last point on the not looking at the initial size because the picture would indeed be quite different if you only look at the initial and not the outstanding. So those were the two things that went hand in hand in the analysis. Then in terms of your, I think your last comment on the deferral regime, that there may be an issue in areas of for smaller issuances and an issue in terms of market stress condition, if I'm not mistaken. We tried to get the balance right. Obviously, in terms of market stress condition, there is the mechanism to suspend transparency if needed. Again, we'd be more than happy to also receive any concrete data you have in this area. And we would be definitely looking to look at it and make part of the analysis. Then lastly, David's comments in terms of level one. So again, we tried to make the right balance. We didn't only look at transparency. So our objective was not only to improve transparency. What we tried to do was try to achieve the right balance between more transparency, which we believe it's the objective of the level one, increase overall transparency. But we also aim at looking at ensuring that liquidity providers are not subject to any undue risk. And we try to get that right balance between both by setting the very large thresholds where there will be protection for large orders. You still have a considerable volume deferral for categories four and five, three and four, sorry. So we tried to get the right balance here. Again, this is a consultation stage. If you believe that threshold too high, too low, we would be more than happy to look at the data you have, why you believe liquidity providers will be subject to undue risk with the current thresholds. Be very, very happy to get that data. So we encourage everyone to actually not only reply to the C P, obviously, but if you have any data that could be used to us, we would be extremely grateful for that as well. Then the last comment, indeed, we need to consult the experts stakeholder group. We have not done that for the sole reason that the group is not yet set. So we know the setup this experts stakeholder group is the role of the European Commission. We know that there has been a call for candidates. Now, I believe those candidates have been, have sent their applications. As far as we understand, the experts group is close to being set up, but is not set up yet. So we will obviously be looking for their advice as a response to the C P because when doing the C P, it was not possible for us to consult them. We also consult the the ESMAs, the ESMAs second markets stakeholder group for advice. We tried to consult the industry as much as possible. But the stakeholder group, as required by level one, was not done for the sole reason that has not been set up yet, which will do as soon as it is set up, we'll be more than happy to get their advice.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any further remarks? If any clarification for my answer are needed, more than happy for, to further comment on that. Any other questions or comments at this stage? I see Marco, Marco Sartori, please.
Yes, many thanks for saying this, Marco Sartori from the Association of Exchanges. But one very quick remark and then one quick question. First is that I understand from the membership that they very much support the approach that is taken by ESMAs in increasing transparency. And a quick question is to understand kind of whether the new deferral regime is intended as no later than, in a sense that this was needed to publish the transactions no later than the deferred specified, but they can also be published before if wished. So thank you.
Thank you, Marco. I'll take Anastasios as well and then I'll provide an answer. Anastasios, please.
Hello, Anastasios Kralambis from AFME. Thank you for hosting us today. A quick question, please, for covered bonds. We see that the approach that ESMAs proposes is to maintain the same thresholds as those for sovereign bonds. How is that proposal quantified from another analysis perspective? Have you considered other approaches such as aligning with the corporate bonds framework? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Maybe I'll just go through this too quickly. So thank you very much, Marco and Anastasios, for your comments. Quickly, Marco, indeed, so the deferrals that I said are the maximum deferrals. So meaning no later than, obviously, they can be published others. So just to reiterate, it is the maximum deferral. Then Anastasios, for covered bonds, we were left with a bit of a question mark in this, in this area. So obviously, covered bonds, if you look at the data that we provide, it looks a little bit different than sovereign bonds in terms of the distribution, although not very much, but certainly a little bit. We also looked at the thresholds for corporate bonds and how that would look like. And the main discussion, the main conclusion, especially from those jurisdictions that have more trading disservice, so that certainly the Nordic countries, was that it would be more appropriate to set a higher level threshold for covered bonds rather than aligning with corporates. We could have set different thresholds, so something in the middle between corporates and sovereign bonds. But our conclusion was that in order to simplify and to make the regime a little bit simpler, it would be interesting to align either corporate bonds or sovereign bonds. And the discussion we had with member states was that the more appropriate one and the one that would give them the most appropriate distribution in terms of what will be captured under the different categories would be to align with sovereign bonds. And this was the approach taken. Again, very happy also to receive any comments in the C P on this one and any other proposed thresholds that could be more appropriate. Maybe I'll take Stefan again, please.
Yes, thank you very much. One very genuine question. In determining the classes or the subclasses in the bond category, so you end up with government bonds, corporate bonds, covered, and that's about it. One question is, did you envisage typically a sub-classification, for instance, differentiating between euro-denominated bonds and bonds in local, national currencies? Because the market may be different. So did you consider it and did you conclude that it was not relevant? Or did you start from the assumption that it would be simpler to not to differentiate per currency?
I'll reply in a second. I see Natasha also, so I'll take Natasha's question and then I'll get back to you, Stefan. Natasha, please.
Hi, it's Natasha Adams from Deutsche Bank. Just quickly, so I suppose question on the back of many other participants' comments around maximum deferrals and you can publish earlier if you want to. I think that kind of works in the first couple of categories. But when you're starting to get the deferral, especially the very large category, where the deferral is there sort of for a risk reason, it would be a little bit concerning if we had the whole market publishing end of day when the deferral is there for a reason. So I'm wondering if you could comment on what your expectations would be there.
Thank you, Natasha. Any other question at this stage? I'll take Dorit, please.
Thank you. It's Dorit Buckman from the Association of German Banks. Please just allow me a general remark and I'm also touching upon what Natasha just said. I would like to add that the market will react whatever ESMA decides. We've got the impression that ESMA hasn't really calibrated between liquidity and transparency. But we're sure that liquidity providers will have to protect themselves. They will do it in any reasonable way, but this won't lead to increased transparency. And we think that the connection between liquidity and transparency, and especially with the CTP data should be realized, because if liquidity surface in the market, there will be less data on the CTS. And this must be taken into account. And we would really like to call on ESMA to see what might be going on in the market, because as I said, the market will react whatever you decide. So we think thresholds haven't been set right and the deferrals are too short, just to put it very basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe then I'll take, I'll try to comment on these questions. So Stefan, so we did look at the different currencies, but we thought we would overly complicate the regime. So our starting point in order to simplify was to set these thresholds in euros. We did look at the date. We understand that there's some outliers. We have discussed them with the NCA's. But we thought it would make the regime overly complicated if we then separate by currency. And that's why we have decided to keep the euro as the thresholds for each of the different bond types. Then Natasha, on the maximum deferrals. What we have in the text is that the deferrals are maximum. And I can understand the concern, but I I think our expectations in terms of how they would be said, I wouldn't expect the very large trades with the maximum deferral of four weeks, people deciding to publish real time, for example, or anything like that. So our expectation is that the maximum deferrals would, in almost all circumstances, be used. Of course, we cannot know for sure what the different market participants will do. But I think as happens now, the maximum deferrals will be the ones that are used. And again, we'll be looking at the market to also engage it with each other if there's any issue around this area. But our expectation is that the maximum deferrals would be the ones that are used. When I noted that the deferrals are the maximum and therefore no later than, it is just how the text is done. Frankly, we will not be expecting the deferrals to be, to not be used in their full, to their fullest extent. But I think that's as much as I can say here again, maximum deferral. I think we expect those to be used, but it's just the way the legal text is written. And Dorit, so on your, Dorit's comment, I think our concern, I think from many of you, doesn't seem to be that we got this right, was again, to have a balance between great transparency available in the market and appropriate protection for liquidity providers. We have to see then how the market reacting in terms of the thresholds. I know the market will react and have the way to then adapt to the thresholds that ESMA sets. I think at this stage, I would reiterate that this is a consultation. We'll be more than happy to get your comments. If you think the thresholds are too high, please do include that in your responses. But I think also what would be very important for us is to have concrete proposals as well, not only saying that thresholds are too high, but actually they are too high because of a number of reasons and they should be set at X level. That way, we can look at the data, look at the implications and have something concrete to discuss. Again, not wanting to sound repetitive, but if you have data that can be useful in terms of how you, anyone can be under high liquidity risk if traded at the different categories, size categories, we would love to receive those and to see whether you have any other proposal in terms of the thresholds on whether they should be set higher or whether they should be set lower and what level. On the deferral time, I think one point is we said for most categories, the maximum deferrals allowed in the legislation. So we could not go, we could not extend any of those deferrals, certainly the volume one. And of course, I recognize that we decreased slightly for categories three and four, the price deferral. So again, something that we can look as we see your responses and evaluate whether there should be any changes there. But for most circumstances, what we have done is to keep the maximum deferrals already allowed in level one. I hope this clarifies a bit, but happy to further specify anything. Let's take Sarah and then David. Sarah, please.
Good morning. I just, I think it was on page 11 of your slides or nine, where you can see the current regime, the new regime and the volume and the trade count, and which, you know, you reverse it now and not this side. Maybe it was nine, then, yeah, in the upper right corner, you know, now, no? This one, yeah, page eight, where you see right now, like 95% are illiquid and in the new regime, 81% are liquid. So this is really a huge change. And do you intend, I mean, I don't know if you need any data for seeing that this will have a huge impact on the market and on behavior on the market. But do you intend on implementing this on a step-by-step basis? Or just, you know, from, I don't know, 27, 80% will be liquid and then transparent, this goes along with it?
Thank you, David. And then we will take this last question since we are ending our time. So I'll take David and then I'll reply and we wrap it up. David, please.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize, I didn't announce myself previously, I'm from Morgan Stanley. My question is regarding the very large category. Level one does not cater for the splitting of very large into illiquid and liquid. Is it ESMA's view that it is legally precluded from splitting very large into illiquid and liquid?
Thank you. So firstly, going to Sarah's point, we do not intend to do a step-by-step. We understand that there's a different, very big difference in terms of the current regime and the new regime. We think that new regime did not capture, did not capture what was intended. There were very, very few liquid bonds. So certainly a change will have to occur. Then just also to reiterate, regardless of whether a bond is liquid or illiquid, it will always be subject, for example, for real-time transparency, because there's no difference. So any bond trading below, for example, sovereigns, 5 million, there's no difference between being liquid or liquid. So we're always being made transparent. So and there is a further level of protection on the other categories. So we think it just strikes the right balance. And then obviously, we can look for other thresholds. But I mean, as mentioned, we, there is no, the regime is a little bit different. So both liquid and illiquid bond will be subject to transparency anyway, only with this differentiation between the different categories. So we will not be looking for a step-by-step approach in this area. And on a very large, David, I mean, the table and the different categories are set in level one. As a first thought, I don't think there would be any possibility for us to further differentiate. Now, again, I have to say, this was not a question that we ask our legal for an assessment in this area. But our starting point is that those five categories are set and therefore we would use them as they are. So no differentiation between liquid and illiquid for small trades, although they are under real-time transparency, and also no differentiation for the very large transactions that we have in category five. Though I wouldn't want to say categorically that is illegal. We believe that the categories should be set as they are defined in level one and that's what we have done.
Thank you.
So I think we're coming to an end to this part. I'd like to thank you all very much for your comments, your questions. We look forward to receiving your answers. As I said, again, if you have data you can have, please do let us know. And a very quick point, we, I think we were mentioning, there's a new consultation coming up very recently that will focus on RTS one. But it will also include a very short section on flags for RTS two that was not included in this iteration. So just to make you aware of that, it's a small section. It is not something that would be very controversial, but also something for the sake of clarity that I would like to put to everyone. That will come out in the next couple of weeks. So thank you very much. We'll do a coffee break, I think five minutes, and then we'll start with the next session of PATT. Then, so thank you all and looking forward for your responses.
Good morning, all. Hope you're enjoying this public hearing and that you have had your coffee. The RTS on RCB, I take it that you've all read the consultation paper, the draft RTS? And I guess you have a lot of comments and questions. The intention of this presentation is not to talk you through the entire consultation paper or the RTS. I'll give some context and highlights to a few aspects that we think are particularly relevant. And then we have plenty of time for your comments and questions. So starting on some context and the legal mandates. Contrary to the RTS two, this is a new mandate. It's not a new subject, but a new mandate. There is the market, the guidelines on market data. But for legal purposes, it's a new mandate that we have to draft an RTS. As mentioned earlier in the introduction of Mr. Brenaventura, the subject has drawn a lot of attention. Although at this moment, that wave of attention has subsided a little bit, we trust that you have a lot of comments and responses, hopefully, as well to our questions in the consultation papers. So we are looking forward to receiving those by the end of August. It's been a subject of discussion for a long time, over a decade, yeah, longer than a decade. It's about money, it's about revenue, about costs. So that makes it a sensitive subject. So we understand that stakeholders have a strong opinion on this. We see that both providers of market data and the buyers of market data have strong opinions. And not surprisingly, those opinions are mostly contradictory, although they are not always presented as contradictory. And as said, although we're not starting from scratch, there is the guidelines on market data. There is a few delegated acts. But the conclusion of the co-legislators in Brussels was that those guidelines and delegated acts didn't have the desired effect. That's why they came up with this article 13 and the mandate for RTS to draft a RTS with more specifics. And furthermore, the co-legislators in Brussels wanted the guidelines to be strengthened. On that strengthening, because it is about money, it's good to emphasize ESMA doesn't have a competition mandate. ESMA doesn't have a pricing mandate. Although we think the text in level one is quite clear, it doesn't state that we have or can, that we have a mandate and that we can set a price. So we're not doing that. And also, our own statute doesn't allow us for an explicit competition authority. So we're not entering into that realm. Then shortly on what we see in the market at this moment, our analysis with only three aspects that I want to highlight. First of all, it's not a very straightforward market. The market for market data is complex. It may seem for some that there is a provider and there is a client, but there's much more to it. Not all providers have the same business model, same as not all clients use the data in the same way. There is a number of intermediaries in between. So the distribution is different in various types of market data. So there's many actors. What makes it more complicated is that this RTS is about market data as defined in MiFID. And the market data that is being distributed is more than those data. It's also aggregated. There is added information from other sources. So that's all interacting with each other. The result is that this RTS has an influence probably on that structure, but also the other way around. The structure has some influence on the RTS. It's hard to predict what exactly will happen. But that's also where your knowledge and experience comes in, that we'd like to know what do you think is going to happen, what effect it will have. This complexity hasn't made it very transparent, the market itself. And although that isn't an exact aim of the guidelines at that time, to make the market itself transparent, the guidelines were meant to make also the fees, the pricing, the cost more transparent. And Brussels concluded, and we would agree with that, that that didn't have the desired effect. It's still very OPAP, with not clear how costs are allocated, fees are built. So that transparency is still not there in the level that was envisaged. Thirdly, I want to mention the value-based, cost-based aspects of market data. Here as well, there is, there has been a discussion in Brussels on this. Quite clearly, the co-legislator has Quite clearly, the co-legislator has made a choice to make market data cost-based, to require it to be cost-based. References to value-based pricing are removed from that legislation. So there was a clear choice made in Brussels. Noteworthy is also that Brussels didn't put a limitation or a restriction on the type of costs which are allocated to market data. So there is no limitation on that side. That brings us to the proposals in the RTS. Here as well, three aspects that I would like to mention. Building on what was previously said, the transparency, the transparency is important. The cost transparency is very relevant, but there's no limitation on the cost, as just said. So there is a number of choices to be made, how to make this transparent. Terms and terminology that can be used are indirect, direct, shared, not shared, and there's probably many more. And our choice at this moment is that we use buckets, which we try to make them as clear as possible, what type of costs can be included in there. And there is a level of transparency around it, so that it becomes clear what the costs are that are used to build the fees. There are many more choices, and also for you, that's a question to you. What is the best choice here to achieve this transparency? Reasonable margin. It's the core of this RCB. And as you have read, it is a difficult term. What is reasonable? We've made a choice in here, and it's a way of trying to make margin reasonable compared to what we tried revenue. There are more choices to be made here, or more choices that could be made. And suggestions are welcome, how we can make this reasonable, more tangible, more enforceable, or more workable. Lastly, in categorization. Categorization currently is a common practice, and the draft RTS specifically allows this, but within limits. And the limit is, again, it has to be cost-based. The effect could be that there is a categorization based on costs, but the reasonable margin which is allowed to be set for a category is not cost-based. So there is a possibility of differentiation of fees through the reasonable margin that's applicable for this one category. We've decided to put this in the draft RTS to provide some leeway to set different margins for different categories. As said, that's a reflection of the complexity of the market, in which there is a number of stakeholders and players, which may make it reasonable to allow for different margins to be asked from different stakeholders. Then lastly, more on what we're looking for. First of all, of course, we've put a number of questions, I think over 30, in the consultation paper that we would like to have your responses to. But a few here to mention that we are very keen to get your opinion on is the transparency. Have we managed to get the right balance in how to achieve transparency and make it workable as well? Reasonable, as you just said, reasonable is a subjective term, and it's not defined. But how can we ensure that this subjectiveness is consistently applied across the industry and also across time? And how do we make it possible to make it more homogeneous? Monitoring, I think most of you are not that much concerned about monitoring, but we would like to stress that it's also in your interest to see whether the monitoring that the national competent authorities have to do and that ESMA will do is going to be effective, because that will help us, regulators, supervisors, and ESMA as the policymaker, to ensure that compliance with these rules and with the goals of the RTS is indeed achieved. So also, your attention, please, for how to monitor this as well as possible. And as said, there are many more questions in the consultation paper, which we would like you to respond to. And I would like to leave it at that, to allow for comments and questions. As hesitant as you are now, the more outspoken you were before. So yes, please.
David? Hello, hello there. I'm sorry, I just had to unmute myself. This is David Wisely, speaking on behalf of AFNE. I would just like to make a comment under the heading of transparency. We have been going through the consultation paper and finding it helpful where ESMA has been introducing standardization through the templates in the annexes of the draft RTS. One of the suggestions that has come out of our working groups is that ESMA should consider, in a future consultation paper perhaps, establishing a standardized transparent template format for market data policies themselves, so as to improve comparability between different providers. We think that ESMA's goals and intentions with the RTS are quite commendable, and that to improve transparency going forward, not only having standardized cost categorizations, standardized definitions, as you have in the RTS, but also a standardized template for the market data policies themselves would be extremely helpful. If you have any views to share on that, we'd be very happy to hear them.
Looking if there are others. No. And David, thank you for your comments. This indeed has crossed our mind as well. We didn't go that far because of that one comment or one analysis aspect, that it's the complexity in this market which didn't convince us that it would be workable or enforceable to have one type, one template for the market data policy agreement because of the sheer differences between types of market data in the market. At the time, we were not convinced that that would be very useful to introduce. We've had this comment before. Please feel free, if you have a suggestion, what this policy agreement template should look like, what should be in there. As said, we've seen a number of these market data policy agreements, and they're widely different from each other. So we didn't go in there at the moment. I see a hand, but I don't see your name.
Rebecca. Hi, yes, Rebecca, from the stock exchange, but speaking on behalf of Turquoise and Trade Echo. This question is in respect of the delayed data requirements for the 15-minute delayed data provision on the website. So we note that ESMA have proposed in the consultation to remove the ability to have registration on those services. From our perspective, our registration is really straightforward. We require an email and password, and we don't collect any kind of additional details from the users. It doesn't prevent users from downloading the data systematically. And we think it's not a barrier to entry, but it does allow us to completely manage all operational issues, advise users of plans to, you know, adjust the service, any downtime that might happen. We are concerned that if registration was removed, we wouldn't be able to inform users as to any useful information that they would require with respect to the service, whether that be any kind of file format changes, enhancements to the service, and allow us to kind of monitor the use of that. So I wondered how you conceive providers of 15-minute delayed data managing the service properly if the registration requirements are removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Indeed, we removed the registration requirements. Reasoning behind that was because the information that reached us on the registration requirements and on the possibility to allow for streaming of that delayed data, and here as well, the various practices of how to present delayed data. We concluded from that information that registration indeed is hampering access without, in our view at the moment of drafting, good reasons why to have that registration. Weighing the reasons that you just mentioned against the reasons of users to not have registration and the free access, the way we see that it is required, made us come to the conclusion that we have removed any way of registration of the users. If there is sufficient reason and argumentation to say, well, there is no impediment, no barrier at all, that is something good to know, but for now, we don't see that. And we see registration still as a barrier which is not needed.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think from our perspective, we do see customers systematically pulling the data from our solution. I know that might not be the, I'm not familiar with the setups of all the other providers. I wonder whether a kind of minimum standard for registration might be a better middle ground to allow the providers to manage the service adequately, but also not be a barrier to entry. So we'll happily, we'd be happy to discuss that with you offline. Obviously, we'll provide that in our responses. But I think from our perspective, the removal of registration would mean that we are unable to kind of manage that service in a way that helps the users understand what's in there and what's happening if there are any kind of changes. But thank you for your response.
Thank you for providing us with your reasoning. Thank you. And there's a next hand, Clément, that is Ludovic?
Yes, Ludovic, yes. Yes, hello, Ludovic Eagle from NASDAQ. I have a question on basically the differentiation between the different categories and different prices. I wanted to ask if value of data cannot be involved in determining the prices of data. How does ESMA seize the basis for price differentiations between the different categories of customers?
I understand you're right. Because there is no value-based possibility, how can you then categorize? What we found is because there are various ways that data is provided and also differences in data provided to clients, there is a possible cost differentiation. So on the one hand, for example, HFT traders will have low latency, will have a need for low latency data provision with a high capacity, with, for example, the full depth of the order book, while other users may not want to have that or have a need for that low latency or for the full book or for the high capacity. And therefore, market data providers will have a different cost for the provision of that data to HFT compared to the ones that have a less high requirement. And that will result, therefore, in a difference in costs, and that will allow for categorization, given that categorization requires that there is more than one user that fits into that category.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's not as simple as that. I mean, the costs cannot be the only basis for distinguishing, but we'll elaborate on that in our response. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, a hand. Michael, please.
Hi, it's Mike Hodgson from Euronext. Just, there's two areas I wanted to just cover briefly. One is the notice period of you suggesting that this should be implemented in three months. I mean, recently, the changes that you're suggesting are going to be significant, and it could be that data providers like ourselves come up with new commercial models for this. And we won't be the only ones. You know, this could be across 20 different data providers across Europe. So getting those policies and prices and contracts in front of clients, who maybe are going to have to sign 20 new agreements, three months is not going to be enough to do that. And I mean, recently, we migrated Bolsa Italiana onto the Euronext agreement. So all the Bolsa clients had to sign the Euronext agreement, and Euronext clients had to sign for the Bolsa products via the Euronext agreement. That has taken a year to do. I mean, we've got 1,600 clients. So doing that in three months, across multiple data providers, across all the data vendors as well, it's going to take at least a year to do that. And the second point I had was just on your definition of device for non-display. Most users can't count. If they're using a refinitive permissioning system, they can. But if most users can't count their non-display devices today, so you need to mandate that if that is the definition, users build tools to be able to count that. Thank you.
Thank you. On your first question or remark that three months implementation time is way too short. Yes, this is a feature of legislation that we're confronted with with almost every legislation. And it's also affecting us that we have to draft regulations in a very, very short time. And we are aware, so it's good that you mentioned this, this year's size of what you have to do. On the other hand, there is also, of course, the fact that we've been talking about this, that we will send the draft RTS, the final reports, by the end of this year. So there is some more time to anticipate a change in regulation and therefore, a change in the policy agreements that you will have with your clients, which is much longer than the three months. So it's not as if it comes out and then you have three months. But so noted that three months in this market can be a stretch to make it happen. On your device, non-display items, and whether or not clients can count it, I'm not sure if that's going to be so relevant, because the cost or the fee schedule that is going to be applicable needs to be based on the cost. So only if you have a structure in which you can make it clear as a market data provider that it is relevant to know how many non-display items a client has, then that is something that needs to be provided for by the client. Again, then not knowing exactly all the various intricacies of market data provision, this is something where we've seen in the current practice as well, that users need to be able to provide you with that information. So I'm not sure if that's going to be much different in new situations, other than that it might not be relevant at all anymore.
Then it suggests you don't need a definition of device. But I mean, today, it's used to differentiate between small and large customers. Otherwise, everybody's going to pay exactly the same fee. Okay, well, we'll comment. We've got some detailed comment around, so we can send you that and pick it up for later discussion.
Thanks, that would be very welcome. Yes, please. I can't see you, but you're probably still on mute.
No, sorry, the mute button. So I just wanted to query for the annex for the RCB. There is the category for pricing.
There is the category for pricing under other with justification for inclusion. Has ESMA considered how this will be assessed? And will there be any sort of governance around how costings assigned under the other category would be reviewed?
Thanks. The other category is in there to catch any costs that can't be allocated under the list that's above it. Given that in our view, that list above is quite comprehensive, that other category will, we think, be very limitedly used. How to check it's reasonable, how to check whether it's correct that there is another cost? That is firstly up to the NCA, so the competent authority of the market data provider in that jurisdiction. Secondly, there is the mechanism in which we at ESMA try to converge the practices around Europe in many aspects, and also this is going to be one of them, that we can share what we see being allocated as costs to market data, which we can then discuss amongst the regulators, what we think is reasonable, what we think is correctly allocated, which will then go back to the competent authority to deem whether it's going to enforce any action or remedial action on that.
Understood. Thank you.
Well, I suppose if there are no other questions, either the RTS is very clear and very workable, we hope. But I take it that you're going to write more on paper to send it to us by the end of the summer. And I think then in the interest of having more time for the other subjects, we will move on to the next RTS. Thank you.
I guess it's for me. Thank you, and good morning also from my side. My name is Yana Ladini. I work in Data Intelligence and Technology Department at ESMA. And I will have the pleasure today of guiding you for the session on the reference data. In my presentation, I will briefly touch on all the major topics raised in the consultation. I will follow the order of the topics raised in the consultation paper, so hopefully it's easy to follow. And maybe I would ask you to wait with the questions until the end. I think we'll have plenty of time for that. So without any further ado, let me start with a very quick recap of the changes that were made to the Level 1 in the MiFID review with regards to the reference data reporting, so Article 27. As you can see in this slide, the mandate itself has not changed substantially, so the core of the mandate is the same. ESMA shall define the data standards and formats for the reporting of financial instrument reference data, the methods and arrangements for reporting, the form and content of such data, and the technical measures necessary for the effective receipt and exchange of the data and for the data quality. There is one new element in the mandate, which is the date by which reference data are to be reported, and I will cover it in a little bit more detail later in the slides. While the mandate itself has not changed substantially, what is important to note is that the revised Article 27 specifies that the reference data should be collected not only for the transaction reporting proposals, which is the case currently, but also for the transparency proposals. So this is, of course, a very good direction, which follows the overall objective of burden reduction in the area of reporting. And we duly consider this by streamlining, by proposing to streamline the reference data for both proposals into a single data flow under Article 27 that would feed into FIRZ Financial Instruments' reference data system. And then finally, it is also now explicitly set out in the Article 27 that in developing the technical standards, we should consider alignment with the international standards and consistency with EMIR and SFR reporting frameworks. So we also propose certain amendments stemming from this harmonization objective. Moving to the next slide, let's start with the first big topic, which is this adaptation of the reference data for the transparency proposals. You will see in the consultation paper that we have performed quite a detailed gap analysis comparing the reference data that are reported currently under RTS 1 and 2 for bonds and equity and derivatives, vis a vis the reference data that are supplied under RTS 23. As a result of this analysis, we have identified some fields that would need to be included in the RTS 23, as well as several fields that are reported both under RTS 1 or 2 and the RTS 23, but not always in exactly same form. So we would be also proposing some adjustments to make sure that the data, that the reference data can be reported in efficient manner. And I think that this analysis actually shows that there is indeed a lot of sense in streamlining and further harmonizing the reporting of reference data. So here, I would just mention once more that it's a quite technical assessment, but your feedback here would be absolutely instrumental to make sure that we get the proposals right. With regards to the OTC derivatives identifying reference data, you would recall that in the Article 27, there is now a mandate for the European Commission to develop a delegated act specifying the OTC derivatives identifying reference data for the purpose of transparency. And there is also another optional mandate under which European Commission may also develop another delegated act specifying OTC derivatives identifying reference data for the purpose of transaction reporting. On 12 June, so a bit more than two weeks ago, European Commission has published the delegated act under the first mandate, which is open for comments by 10 of July. Why I mentioned it here today? Because of course, there is a clear interaction between the identifying reference data that are proposed in the draft delegated act and the broader RTS 23, in which we set out the framework for the reporting of reference data. So here, as explained in the consultation paper, what we are trying to assess is how exactly we should ensure that the content of the delegated act is well reflected in the broader RTS 23 framework. And in the consultation paper, you will see a very preliminary proposal, which, given that the consultation was finalized before the draft delegated act was public, so that proposal was still based on the previous consultation from the European Commission, which was published back in November. But I think it will give you an overview on what is our direction of thinking and your further inputs on any other aspects that we should take into account would be here. Very welcome. So maybe just to recap, should you have any questions or comments on the content of the draft delegated act, I would encourage you, of course, to reply to the commission consultation. On the other hand, in our consultation paper, in the relevant question, we would like to invite you to provide your inputs on any further aspects that we should consider when working on incorporation of the delegated act into the broader RTS 23. Moving to the next slide. So date by which reference data are to be reported, as mentioned, it's one new element in our mandate. For those of you who are more familiar with EMIR reporting, we had a similar mandate under EMIR FID, and we used it to set out a transition period for one specific obligation. In that case, it was obligation to update the outstanding derivatives. This use case is not really applicable in the MiFID reporting context. And so far, we have not really identified at this stage a need for setting a date by which reference data are to be reported that would be distinct from the application date. So should you believe that there is such a use case, we would be, of course, happy to hear that, to see that in your feedback to the consultation. And as for the date of application itself, as also explained in the consultation paper, we acknowledge, of course, a need for the appropriate implementation timeline, like in any reporting framework. So you will see a proposal for the delayed date of application. And in a broader context, we also believe that this date of application should be aligned with the application date of other interdependent requirements, such as the one on the transaction reporting. In the second part of the slide, we mention alignment with EMIR, SFR, and the international standards. Here, I think it's fair to say that we are starting actually from a... We have a good starting point because the current MiFID requirements already rely to a great extent on the relevant ISO standards and are also pretty much aligned with EMIR. So back in time, when the previous EMIR technical standards were... went live in 2017 and MiFID in 2018, already this harmonization alignment exercise was performed. At the same time, of course, a lot has happened since that point in time. In particular, EMIR technical standards were reviewed in line with the globally agreed standards on the reporting of OTC derivatives. So definitely, another careful review is desirable here, and we have performed a quite detailed assessment in the consultation paper, field by field analyzing which of the reportable details could potentially be further aligned. So again, a very technical assessment, and we very much count on your feedback here in case we have missed something. Moving to the next slide is on CSDR publications. So this actually does not come from MiFID review, but rather from the CSDR review, which envisages that ESMA would publish a list of instruments which are in the scope of the settlement discipline regime. Having performed a comparison of the requirements under the two frameworks, we have concluded that the CSDR instruments would be a subset of the instruments that are to be published in FIRZ. So from that perspective, of course, it appears reasonable to optimize the publications by integrating the CSDR instruments into FIRZ. And in the consultation paper, we have included some more specific proposals on how this could be operationalized in practice. We have also a section in the consultation paper, which is called with this a bit generic name, "Other enhancements", but basically, these are all the changes or improvements that we are proposing to address certain deficiencies in the current MiFID reporting based on a couple of years of experience that authorities have gained with the use of data in the current shape and form. So I will not delve into the details here, but I think you will find that there are a couple of interesting proposals on what is important to cover in the new regime or what could be further streamlined. So also, I would encourage you to take a look and express your preferences in your feedback. With regards to the format for reporting, this proposal has been triggered by the outcomes of a study on data formats that ESMA has commissioned in the context of the preparatory work for the consolidated type providers. And objective of that study was twofold. So on one hand side, to identify a format that would be suitable for the future CPT needs. And I think you will hear a little bit more on that aspect in the afternoon session. But the second objective was also to try to find such a format that would be versatile enough and that would be also suitable for the general reporting purposes, being it under other pieces of the MiFID framework, but also potentially other reporting regimes. So based on the outcomes of those studies, of the study, it has been concluded that JSON would be an adequate candidate. And this is the format that we are considering. Of course, here, it's quite clear that transition to a different reporting format entails certain costs. So in the consultation paper, we asked for your feedback, both on the cost but also on the benefits of such a transition, considering both short-term and long-term perspective. And that assessment will be quite important for us to take a decision. Then with regards to the reporting by DPs, we have decided also to include a short section on that aspect. On one hand side, as you will know, the designated publishing entities will be listed in a register published by ESMA. This is not something that we would cover in our RTSS, of course, but this is an important feature also for the reference data reporting. So we decided to use this occasion to ask you a question on any potential aspects related to the practical implementation that you would like to raise with us, so that we can consider those where needed. And more on the reporting side, the main question is whether there is anything in relation to this reporting by DPs that have been introduced in MiFID review that would need adjustments in the RTSS themselves. So one quite obvious example would be, for instance, appeals to identify the DP that is reporting. But if there is anything else that needs to be changed, we would also be happy to hear from you. And then last, but not least, on the scope of reference data to be reported, which is a last section in our consultation paper, the scope, of course, is not defined in the RTSS as it is established in the Level 1. So the purpose of this section of the consultation is to assess what are the new instruments in scope and if there is anything that we should consider in the technical standards, so any adjustments in the reportable fields or other part of the standards that would need to be made to account for those instruments. So we have looked at the, at how the new scope is framed. And basically, the only new instruments in scope would be, I would call them here, pure OTC derivatives. So basically, the ones that are not TOTV or were underlying is not TOTV, which are also in the scope in of Article 8a2, so certain interest rate derivatives and credit default swaps. And it's worth keeping in mind that those categories of derivatives, so interest rate derivatives or CDSs, are already currently reportable to the extent that they are traded on venue or underlying traded on venue. So in principle, we don't think that there is anything in the RTSS that should be changed to account for those new instruments, without prejudice, of course, to the changes that may stem from the European Commission delegated act, which I was also mentioning before. So well, this brings me to the end of the presentation and I would be happy, of course, to take any questions that you might have. David, please.
Hi, thank you very much. I have a number of questions, but I recognize others may as well. So I'll, I'll ask a couple and then give others opportunity. Really firstly, a couple of observations. The proposed inclusion of reference data related to CSDR instruments and indeed other aspects such as fund administrator, I have to confess, I have concerns about that in some of the cases that have been proposed, some things that have been proposed, we seem to be straying from true instrument reference data and I would be, I would urge caution on that point. Likewise, in the move, the proposals to move data from RTS 2 to RTS 23, as you mentioned yourself, Joanna, these are extremely technical points and require an enormous amount of analysis and time is short. So I, again, I would strongly urge caution on that as well. I guess, in general, the point would be to measure twice and cut once and avoid unintended consequences. I have a technical question on the mechanics of the interaction between the delegated act and the OTC derivatives identifier and the RTS. Given that the delegated act is obviously going to specify reference data required for OTC derivatives, will the RTS ultimately mirror the delegated act or will it remain silent on the pieces that are identified in the delegated act differing to the delegated act? And the reason I ask that is because from a technical implementation perspective, it's obviously much more helpful for us to be able to rely on a single source of text, rather than to have to read across multiple texts. So I'll pause there because I recognize, I'm sure there are others that would like to ask questions.
Thank you very much. I will take maybe a question also from Natasha and then answer it both.
Yeah, hello, Natasha from Deutsche Bank. I was going to ask a question, although I'm not sure it's valid, but I'll ask it, I'll ask it anyway. And then obviously, hopefully, the answer is, is an easy one. On the element of OTC, when you refer to pure OTC derivatives, i.e. not traded on a venue, do you believe that the DPE is responsible for reporting those under the Level 1 text? I can't leave it at that.
Thanks. I see no more hands for the time being, so I will give time people to think if anything else raised. So going first to your first point, David, I think it's a very valid point. We are absolutely aware that getting the things right with regards to those new proposals requires a lot of careful assessment. So definitely, we've been working on it internally at ESMA when preparing the consultation paper. But that's why I also mentioned that we very much count on your technical expertise and on your careful review and the detailed feedback on those aspects. We, it's true that we don't stop at the, at proposals that are explicitly mentioned in the mandate. We try to, we try to streamline and optimize the reporting as much as possible, very much looking into the long term reduction of the, of the reporting burden. So in the case, and also to facilitate the use of the data by the market participants. So this is, for instance, the reason for incorporating the CSDR publications into FIRS. I think in the consultation paper, you will see, or at least we have tried to explain well, what will be the benefits of those proposals. But as I said before, we also need to hear about any potential challenges so that they can be, they can be addressed. And also, if you, if you see alternative proposals on some specific aspects, that is the most helpful feedback. On the, specifically on the delegated act and RTS 23, I think today it's too early to provide any definite answer how this would be incorporated. It's clear to us that the content of the delegated act needs to be reflected in some way in the RTS 23. So RTS 23 is, of course, broader. The delegated act covers only the OTC identifying reference data, but we need to make sure that the two go hand in hand and work well together. In the consultation paper, which again was based still on the previous commission consultation, but we have, we have set out what is our direction of thinking and that, for instance, additional reference data may need to be incorporated into RTS 23, depending on the final content of the delegated act. But we will assess that in detail also after receiving your, your comments and your suggestions. So the, like the one that you mentioned in your, in your intervention, this type of feedback would be very helpful to us. And then finally, with regards to the reporting by the DPEs, indeed, it's, it's set out in the Article 27 that for those instruments that are in scope of the reference data reporting but are not traded on the, on the venue, the designated publishing entities would need to provide the reference data to FIRS. Do you want more hand? Yes, David, please go ahead.
Hello, good morning. Thanks a lot for this precious question. David Angeloni, Italian Banking Association. A quick question that our members have raised recently. It might, it might be asked because of, of a further need of time to get into the new legislation and into the consultation papers, but I prefer on behalf of them to ask the question. It appears not to be clear whether, whether an entity has to register or candidate to be a DPE on the basis of specific asset classes or, say, in general terms. And by which means, if there's a template that has to be used to candidate and qualify as a DPE? On the other side, we understand that, if it's not misunderstood, the date by when an entity has to qualify as DPE is the end of September this year. So it's a question to have some clarification on this. Thanks a lot.
I can maybe start and is the, the status of the DPE indeed would be, is to be assigned per asset class. Sorry, I lost the last point of your question.
I'm sure that was, I think the last part was about the register, no? That is, that we have to make public at ESMA towards the end of September and.
Yes, I was going to note our transition statement.
Sorry, sorry. The second part of the question was if we have to expect a template or any other mean for members that want to qualify as DPE, a template to be used to candidate as DPEs? Or if it is just sufficient to be in contact with the national competent authority?
I think we covered a bit in our statements here, photo for reference data, the DPE regime will start only once we have Level 2 in place for post-trade transparency. In the statement in March, we said for the time being, Bibi Lei and DSI regime and Dr. Punktum is too much, can expect in the next weeks, more clarity from our side and also on the implementation of the transparency regime for, what's in DPE regime for transparency and also more information on what's the register table look like, what kind of information will be included, that will also then make it easier for you to then notify your agency.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, David.
I think I just understood you to say, and this was one of the questions I had on my list, the, the obligation of DPEs to report to thirds will not start until this RTS comes into effect. Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, David. I think you're on mute to Dorit, who wants to speak.
Sorry, did I get it right?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to make, sorry, I have to introduce myself again. It's Dorit Bockerman from the Association of German Banks. I would just like to make a remark on the JSON format, because our members are very concerned about a possible move from XML to JSON. And the main reason for this is that XML is a long established format, not only in the EU, but also in the US. So this would mean considerable change. And we don't think that this will really improve things, but we will, we are worried that we will have to use different formats in different jurisdictions. That's one of the main reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take maybe the other two questions from Alicia.
Good morning. So thank you very much for this opportunity to ask questions during this, this session. So in the current wording of the RTS 23 Article 2, that you referred to in your very first slide, the reporting obligation is drafted in such a way that there is no obligation to ensure that new listings are reported before the actual effective day. So we were wondering, has ESMA considered that this be changed in order to have an up to date thirds referential at the beginning of the trading day, so that a consolidated tape provider can use it when preparing its referential for the coming day? And I apologize, I forgot to introduce myself, Alicia Samenski from EuroCTP. Thank you.
Thank you. And there is one more question from David.
Hi, sorry, I've got a few, haven't I? Regarding the, the question in the RTS around DPE asset classes, clearly, in order to support transparency by DPEs, the asset classes will need to be identified for that transparency regime to, to, to be effective. Is the intention to potentially revisit those asset classes once the RTS has been put into, put into effect? Or can we be, can we assure that the asset classes that we will go live with for the DP transparency regime will remain, will remain constant and avoid having to do rework? Does the question make sense?
Yes, absolutely. I was just checking if there are any other hands up, but this does not seem to be the case. So we'll start with the comment from Dorit and thanks for this preliminary feedback. As mentioned also in my presentation, we were, of course, aware that any change in the format requires, requires a certain implementation effort and the cost attached to that. And at the same time, we have identified also benefits, some of them would materialize in the long term, which are outlined also in more detail in the consultation paper. So at this stage, we are in a very open mood and we really would like to invite you to consider this proposal and to assess carefully what it would mean for your organization, both in the terms of cost that, of course, would be there, but also in the, in the considering potential long term benefits if such a change would be proposed overall across the board, also for other reporting regimes and taking into account the benefits that were identified in the, in the study. So we count on your detailed feedback. That will be absolutely instrumental for us to have a proper assessment of, of the proposal that we have made. On the timeframe for reporting, no, the short answer is, is not. We have not, the reference data reporting is indeed end of day reporting and we have not proposed changes in this regard in our consultation paper. So also happy to receive more detailed feedback if, should you believe we should consider some changes. And then finally, moving to the DPE asset classes, we have included in the consultation paper what is the, the current thinking and we, in principle, we do not expect any changes there. The purpose of the consultation is more, or the specific question in the consultation is more to gather feedback from you in case you would foresee any particular implementation challenges related to the introduction of the DP register and specifically also with regards to the instruments, reference data reporting.
Thank you.
I will wait a few more seconds. And if not, I guess we'll all enjoy a bit longer lunch break and together, more power for the afternoon session. Okay, if no more questions, then I think we'll just thank you for all the very useful and interesting discussion in all the sessions that we have held earlier today and we will resume at 1pm. Thank you.
Okay, nodding, yes, good. So good afternoon, everyone, and welcome back to ESMA's public hearing on the MiFID review. As the Chair of the ESMA's Data Standing Committee, I would like to introduce briefly the topics for this afternoon session, devoted to consolidated tape providers and other data reporting service providers. First of all, we will hear from ESMA staff on the proposed RTS on input and output data requirements for CTPs, which will. requirements for CTPs, which will be key to the overall success of European consolidated tapes. And the objective of these RTS is to address two obstacles that have hindered the development of consolidated tape in the EU so far. First, the lack of clear reporting instructions for data contributors. And second, the insufficient quality and harmonization of reported data. In accordance with the revised text of MiFID, ESMA is mandated to define technical requirements for a fast and high-quality transmission and dissemination of data, such as minimum standards for transmission protocols, the definition of real-time and format requirements. In addition, ESMA has to define the content of data as well as the processes that CTPs must implement to ensure their quality before and after the consolidation. The proposals outlined in the consultation paper have been defined by ensuring consistency with the existing MiFID transparency framework, RTS 1 and 2. Additionally, the consultation paper seeks feedback, not only on the effects of the proposals on the performance of the CTP, but also on the cost efficiency for data contributors and on data usability for final users. ESMA invites all future data contributors, CTP applicants and data users to engage on these proposals and to provide feedback, helping to ensure that the final RTS is comprehensive, effective and beneficial for the entire market. We will then turn to a technical standard specifically addressing the CTP for shares and ETFs, i.e. the equity CTP. The RTS on revenue redistribution specifies the weighting and the methodology for calculating the amount of the equity CTP's revenue that has to be redistributed to data contributors. Furthermore, the RTS includes the criteria under which a CTP can suspend the participation of a data contributor in the revenue redistribution scheme, as well as the conditions to resume the application of such scheme. This mandate provides several challenges. It is a completely new regime, which view or no comparison available. And it requires defining fair and non-discriminatory rates for each criterion to incentivize more trading venues to opt into and contribute to the equity tape. ESMA is conscious that this mandate has a tight deadline with delicate political expectations to manage, as well as close links with many other pieces, such as the CTP selection procedures, the new technical standards on reasonable commercial basis, on input-output data, on clock synchronization, as well as the existing RTS 1. Despite these challenges, this mandate provides for the unique opportunity to incentivize full market coverage of the equity tape, as well as to incentivize data quality improvements through potential suspension from revenue redistribution, thus making it one of the key mandates for the success of the equity tape. The third topic of this session will be relevant for a large set of market participants. In the content of the data consolidation by CTPs, it is essential that timestamps reported by different entities can be compared meaningfully. To this end, the MiFID review introduces amendments related to the synchronization of business clocks. Previously, MiFID II mandated ESMA to define clock synchronization requirements only for training venues. The MiFID review transfers this requirement from MiFID II to MiFID and extends its scope to also include designated publishing entities, systemic internalizers, approved publication arrangements and CTPs. As a result, ESMA's proposal is to repeal the current RTS on clock synchronization and replace it with a new RTS, which will contain the same requirements with coherent adaptations to each type of entity. Our fourth area of focus this afternoon will concern all data reporting service providers, not only CTPs, but also APAS and ARMS. The current legal framework for data reporting service providers is established primarily under Title IV A of MiFID. The framework includes specific articles addressing the requirements for authorization, procedures for applications, organizational requirements and the responsibilities of management bodies. The MiFID review introduces significant amendments to the framework, created a clear distinction between the regulatory regimes for APAS and ARMS on the one hand and CTPs on the other hand. As a result, the current regulatory framework should be amended to align with the revised MiFID provisions. For APAS and ARMS, ESMA proposes several changes to the current RTS, that is RTS 13. All references and requirements specific to CTPs have been removed and new provisions requiring ownership structure and internal controls introduced. The organizational requirements have been adjusted to comply with the Digital Operational Resilience Act, DORA. The new mandate for CTPs requires ESMA to develop separate RTS and ITS for the authorization of CTPs with ESMA as competent authority. The proposed RTS include the information with CTP applicants following the selection procedure shall provide to ESMA to assess their compliance with respect to organizational requirements, ownership, governance, internal controls and with DORA. Lastly, we will turn to ESMA's proposed approach for the assessment of applicants for the CTP selection procedures. The MiFID review introduced a list of fourteen criteria that ESMA should take into account when selecting a suitable provider for each of the three consolidated tapes. In anticipation for the selection procedures, each criterion has to be further specified, in particular by setting minimum requirements and by developing scoring methodologies to distinguish the most suitable bits. Given its importance for the success of the CTP project, ESMA organized earlier this year two workshops on these assessment criteria with potential applicants and with CT users and data contributors. The main takeaways of these workshops fed into the consultation paper and ESMA is now looking for more specific feedback on how to approach its criteria. As anticipated, this afternoon will be dense, but hopefully fruitful for all participants. Just like during the morning session, we encourage you to ask questions either by raising your hand or by typing in the chat. I now give the floor to Stefano to present ESMA's proposed approach on the input and output data for CTPs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ami, for this introduction in March and welcome to the TSI parts to this this session of the open hearing. So I will start by showing the first the first RTS on on CTP, which is indeed the one on CTP input and output data. So I will ask my colleagues to go to the next slide. Thank you. So first of all, the the RTS on input out data, it's mandated by Article 22B, according to which ESMA indeed have to specify several reporting instruction for both CTP, but also all the other stakeholders that are involved in this new framework. The main section of these RTS are indeed the minimum requirements for transmission. Stefano, we can't hear you anymore. The 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 second section of these RTS is substance and quality of the CTP data, which indeed are both the the content and the format of input and output data, as well as also the definition of what is real-time for data contributors sending data to the CTP. And finally, all the methods and arrangement that CTP should have in place to ensure that the quality of the data is good enough for the whole framework. It's important also to mention that when specifying those requirements, we had also to take into account other existing MiFID disclosure framework. In particular, we specified the requirements in a way that are fully consistent with RTS 1 and 2. Second, also, it's important to mention that for some of the requirements included in this RTS, we have to take into account the advice of an expert stakeholder group that the City that the European Commission established and that will start to operate soon. So next slide, please. So here again, I would like to to focus a bit on the scope of the RTS. In particular, as I mentioned, it was very important to keep consistency with the RTS 1 and 2 requirements. You also might know that those two RTS are under review. In particular, in the morning, my colleagues had the opportunity to outline the the proposal on the RTS 2 review. So as you you have seen, this RTS will be reviewed in two stages. So there will be a first step to which ESMA will review the bonds requirement in the RTS 2 with which will be done, which will be finalized by nine months from the entry to force of MiFID review. And a second, a second step, which is the review of the derivatives part that will happen at eighteen months after the entry to force of MiFID review. So for that, we we thought it was necessary also to follow a similar staggered approach also for the RTS for for CTP. So we work on a first leg of the RTS that will be finalized by nine months as it's required by MiFID review. That would be that will contain all the requirements applicable only to the equity CTP and the bond CTP. At a later stage, so once we will finalize also the review of the second part of the RTS 2, we will integrate the RTS on CTP input out to data with the requirements that will be applicable also to the derivative CTP. In the consultation paper also, you will not find the any you 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 will not find a specific section on the fields that should be relevant for the equity CTP, because also the RTS 1 review will happen at a later stage. And in a few few weeks, we hope to publish a consultation paper containing also aspects related to the RTS 1 review. In that one also, you will find the section which refers to the equity CTP fields. So next, next slide, please. So here in this slide, you you find a kind of schematic framework of how should work the the CTP. In this RTS, we wanted to to stick to this framework. So we have a frame in which two types of data contributors are sending a specific set of information to the CTP in real-time. The task of the CTP will be to collect those data, to validate those data in in the end to consolidate and to share to share with subscribers. In specifying the requirements in this RTS, we wanted to achieve three main objectives. The first one is indeed to introduce harmonized reporting instruction for data contributors, which indeed was one of the main obstacle for the emergence of CTP. We want also to ensure that the final data arriving to investors are suitable to make investment decision. And third, we want also to ensure a CTP that has an active role in ensuring the quality of the the data comes in that flows into the CTP and out of the the CTP. So in the next slide, I will start to outline what we included in this consultation paper. So starting from the first objective, so introducing a moreized reporting instruction, we are demanded to define a minimum requirement for the transmission protocols. According to MiFID, we didn't have demanded to impose a specific solution, but in the RTS, we define a set of minimum requirements that data contributors should comply with with offering the possibility to set up this system with the CTP. The main requirements are related to the performance of the solution, so the ability to to send data in very fast fashion are related also to reliability. So a set of features that ensure the quality of the information that are sent to the CTP. Security, also, it's a very important aspect, as well as the compatibility with other IT IT system. If we move to the 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 requirements in terms of standards and format of the input data set, here in the consultation paper, we didn't include one specific solution, but we offered two 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 scenarios, two options on which we would like to get feedback from all stakeholders. On this, I would like first to mention that the analysis was largely relying on a study that ESMA launched more than one year ago with Accenture, which we requested recommendation on the best format, both for the CTP context, but also for other regulatory reporting regimes. And according to the study, ASONA was one of the most suitable format in for the regulatory regimes landscape, thanks to its simplicity, thanks to its thanks to its flexibility, and in particular also thanks to the compatibility with ISO standard that are largely used from financial actors. At the same time, if we call, if we focus specifically on the business case of CTP, so a business case where a huge amount of information should be sent in a very short timeframe. According to the study, there were alternative form, alternative formats, in particular, the one under the umbrella of the fixed standards that seems to offer more superior performance than ASONA. At the same time, according to this study, and also according to ESMA assessment, those set of formats seems at the same time to be less flexible, also less compatible with other IT solutions. So if offers, if, if, if they offer a superior performance, at the same time raise some concern on implementation feasibility. So for that reason, we believe that further, further assessment should be done on this topic. So in the consultation, you will find these two options and we would like to, to hear from you. What are your, 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 your feedback on them? In the consultation paper also, we included a real time requirement. So according to our assessment, in particular, thanks also to our experience as supervisor of APIs and also, also thanks to some information that we managed to gather through this study that I mentioned with Accenture. We believe that reasonable requirement would be for post-trade no later than one hundred millisecond after execution, only for those contract that are exchanged on a venue or two hundred millisecond after execution for those information that are reported by an API. If we move to the set of re-trade, we agreed that stricter requirements should be imposed since those set of information are more time, time sensitive. So in our consultation paper, we, we included a requirement of fifty millisecond after the submission of the order. We can continue to the next slide, where we have the last item related to the objective of introducing harmonized reporting instruction. So in the consultation paper also, we included the specification on the, the, the set of the set of information that the CTP should receive from data contributors and also the one that should be, should, should share with its subscribers. For the core market data, so the data that should serve, should, should, should support the final investors to make investment decision. We believe it was reasonable to require the same fields that are requested by the RTS, RTS two. On the output side, the, the CTP should have only to consolidate this information and to add the dissemination timestamp. The regulatory data is indeed, is instead a new set of information. Here, we believe that the input and output data should be the same. Under the umbrella of regulatory data, we have two subset of information, which are the one on the status of individual financial instruments. So basically, data contributor should send to the CTP information on the status of each financial instrument intended as any suspension or any removal or any halt. Whereas the second subset of information is the one on system matching order. So basically, the data contributor should just communicate if it's under current activities or if, for example, it's subject to an outage. We can continue to the next slide. So for the second objective, to ensure data usability for different type of user, in this RTS, we, we would request the CTP to disseminate the data both in a human readable format and in a machine readable one. So for the human readability part, we require to publish data in Egui. Whereas for the machine readability part, we would request the CTP to publish the data in two formats. Those two formats are CSV and the same format through which the CTP receive the data from data contributors. The reason why we request two format for the machine readable part is that we believe that CSV and the other, the other format would be able to fulfill the needs of, of several type of final consumer of data with several type of complexity. We, we can move to the last slide. So it's the requirement for data quality. So the last set of requirements fulfilling the third objective of this RTS. So as I said in the beginning, the CTP is expected to play an active role in ensuring data quality, both on input and output side. Here we, in, in the RTS, we, we, we wanted somehow to retake existing requirement that are already in place for APIs since the business model is very similar to the one of CTP with the introduction of CTP specific requirement. So the CTP on the input side will have the duty to check the completeness of the data format, the compliance with format requirements, the compliance with the real time requirement, and also the identification of outliers. Also, we expect the CTP to communicate any data quality issues found by the CTP. So should be communicated to data contributors. The subsequent step would be for the data contributors to assess the case. And if the data quality issue is confirmed, the data contributors will be expected to resubmit the data to the CTP. Also, on the enforcement standards, we expect the CTP to have in place documentation through which it's possible to, to understand how enforcement measure are activated. My colleague also will explain later what are exactly this enforcement this enforcement tool, in particular, the most effective one will be the suspension of revenue distribution. On the output side also, the CTP is expected to perform some checks, in particular, periodic data reconciliation, continuous IT systems monitoring. And also, we introduce the possibility to open a channel with its subscribers in order to receive from the final, final, from subscriber any communication about potential data quality issues. So I finished to outline all the requirements that we included in this RTS. So I will now leave the floor to the audience for any question. As usual, as done in the morning, I will ask to raise your hand and when starting to make the question, to introduce yourself and if possible, to return the camera. Thank you. So I see first question from Stefan.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Stefano, for this great introduction. My question is, when trying to reply to the consultation, we noticed that a lot of questions are the same for equity and fixing common. Some are more tailor made for equity markets and the fixing come market. And so my first question is, do you expect us to reply on a cross asset basis? Or are you okay for us to reply on, or fixing come separately than on equities? Because we feel that, you know, the, the fixing come market are very different in term of market structure, latency requirements, volume of data, there is no pre-trade transparency. So if, if the requirements are the same, it will increase the cost of the tape for, for, for the fixing come market. And the second question is then, if we can reply to show those difference, will you also consider to have different type of requirement for the different tapes in Europe in your analysis? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stefan, for this question indeed. I mean, also how we, we frame some of the question in the consultation paper. We appreciate if you specify, if you are referring to an asset class or you are referring to another asset class. Because yes, we know that business needs are not the same for all the asset class. Also, I think that especially in the part related to, to format, but also on, on the fields. We also open, in, in the consultation paper, we, we state that we also foresee the possibility to request a different requirement on each, on each asset plus. So yes, from your side would be better that when you, you, you provide your feedback, you, you specify that you are referring to a specific asset class. And on the second question, yes, it's possible that ESMA will specify different requirement per each asset class.
Right, thank you so much.
Okay, I see another question from Eglantin, please.
Hello, Stefano, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to ask your, our question. So Eglantin is at EuroCiti. I think on our side that there is one parameter that we would like to be including in the, in the selection of the protocol is adding some elements regarding backward and forward compatibility to mitigate the risk that any changes at data contributor's level will trigger like unforeseen impacts on the consolidated tape.
Thank you very much. Yeah, maybe if I can ask what are you, what are you, I mean, what's, if you can, if you can, let's say, explain bit better what is this backward compatibility? I'm just making this question because I'm not an IT expert, so for
So basically, it's when you're
Part of the consultation also, we relied on our IT colleagues. But yeah, I would like just to ask you what are you referring to when you say backward compatibility?
So there are some protocols that allow, for instance, data contributors to change a field or to add a new field without breaking the structure of the message and requiring everybody who is taking the field to make changes to be able to read this message. So from an operational perspective, it will be very important for the tape to receive such event. Otherwise, it would require very strict checks and control and testing on every changes coming from every data contributors to the tape.
Yes, okay. Also, in the consultation paper, we added a question asking if you consider the opportunity to add additional
Yeah, we will answer this.
Requirements of, for sure, those for features that I explained are not, it's a strict. So we are open to add or also to remove if any, any other features. So we welcome also the feedback like the one that you, you, you are flagging now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is Stefan. Giordano?
Yes, I, I was just willing to, to comment that when there is a doubt on the quality of, of a piece of data, it's important indeed that the consolidated tape provider comes back to the initial data provider. But also if the data is, is distributed through the tape, that it comes with a special flag. So that it is, it is known to the users that there are checks ongoing on, on that, on that part of the data.
Okay, so according to the article HEN, in the HTS, it's included in the consultation paper, we would ask the CTP not to, to, to publish the data if a data quality error is, is, is flagged. So in theory, for what we, we put in this consultation paper, if the CTP detect a possible data quality error, in that case, the CTP should, should, should stop. The flow of the data should go back to, to the data contributor. And after that, should, I mean, if the data quality error is resolved, the flow of the information can continue. So in theory, the CTP should stop the process if there is a data quality issue. But also on that, I mean, of course, we are open to, to get feedback from, from you if you think that another system should be, should be, should be followed in such cases.
If I may jump quickly on our reply to that, because I agree with Stefan Giordano. It's Stefan Manai speaking again from ING. In, in the bond market, there is instance, we see today because we aggregate data, which is made transparent today since 2018, where it's questionable, you know, a very large transaction who look unusual. And we don't think the city should decide should ever remove data because this data could be correct or could be incorrect, but it's questionable. A wrong currency could be questionable. So if the city start to make decision of what he removed to the tape, you, you break the integrity of the city. That's why we strongly prefer to have a flag to say this that because it's a streaming in real time, this desire is questioned and it's up to the user to say for their usage. You say, do I need to keep it or not? But at least you have the flag and you can decide to filter it out. Sorry, I intervene, but.
No, no, okay, no, it's a valid point. So we, of course, want to take into account. So yeah, it's an alternative system, of course, that would work. I mean, again, what I can say is that we encourage you to, to provide feedback like this. If, I mean, after you will reply to the, the consultation paper and yeah, we will take into account into the final report. But yeah, I mean, I, I see your point, it's valid and thank you, thank you very much for the, the feedback.
Stefano, if I may jump in, we totally, on the EuroCiti side, we totally agree with this approach of flagging. We are a bit worried with a kind of reject to start with. There might be some rejects on very basic format elements that are absolutely for our black or white approach. It's for sure, but for everything that would be fine tuning, et cetera. At least for a transition period, a system of flags might be a safer approach.
Okay, thank you. It's, it's a point taken, so yeah. Thank you, thank you very much for, for this. Thank you. Thank you very much for, for this suggestion. I think we can continue with the question. So I will need to throw to Nina.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Nina Suher Wolf from ICMA. My question relates a bit again to the difference between fixed income and equity perhaps and relating to the latency requirement, which I think where you have or proposed the same requirement in terms of speed for all asset classes or for different asset classes. And I believe there are some studies in the consultation which lay the groundwork for your proposal here of real-time transmission. Just a question, were those studies more based on equity markets or were there, was there data from bond and equity markets? Because the requirement seems to be quite high or quite speedy perhaps for the bond markets.
Okay, thank you for your question. No, the studies were conducted on all the asset class or not only on equity or on bonds. Also, I mean, also as I said, also the requirements that we, we included in the consultation. It's also the result of an analysis of some supervisory statistics, particularly our supervision on APIs and we didn't find particular discrepancies between equity and non-equity in terms of speed. So that's why in the consultation, we believe it was feasible to apply the same requirement for all the asset class. But again, we are happy to, to get feedback from the market if those requirements are not, not feasible. The difference that we did, that we, we made in terms of requirements just between pre-trade and post-trade, since there is a different sensitivities in this kind of information. So for the landscape of post-trading information, for sure, speed is less relevant. So that's why we differentiate the requirement. Okay, I see. I see Francesco and then Mark.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Stefan and everyone. Thank you for a great introduction. The question is about infrastructure. The CTP is tasked, as you explained, with a number of operations related to data completeness, quality harmonization, enforcement, so on and so forth. Now, one of the big lifts in the implementation is on the infrastructure side, the connectivity side. And the CTP needs to provide data to the end user at the lowest possible cost. When we connect all those dots, it is possible that it would be far more efficient and economical if the infrastructure was based on a single API produced by the CTP, which would automatically ensure that only complete data, data of a certain quality with data ranges within, you know, certain parameters would be automatically accepted. It would be easier to manage electronically the feedback mechanism when data is sent incorrectly as opposed to having to determine an offline process with 50 different trading venues and APIs. So would ESMA on this basis support an architecture of this type, which is more similar to what FCA, for example, seems to be agreeing to, as opposed to the opposite view, which is one CTP having to write to 50 different APIs, therefore making it a lot more complex and on a marginal cost basis, a lot more expensive to implement and maintain all those tasks to a level of success that is acceptable to ESMA. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Francesco. I see your point, but according to the legal, I mean, according to the article 22B, which is the, the article giving the the, I mean, that, that is assigning us the task to specify all these requirements. So according to article 22B of level one, we don't have the mandate to impose one, one single solution. We don't have the mandate to give to the CTP the possibility to specify one single solution for the data contributors, which is the case of the UK CTP. The mandate that we have is just to define minimum requirements. And according to the regulation, according to article 22B, this requirement is, this article is set in a way that the contributors will have the possibility to, to choose the best solution that is in line with the minimum requirement that are set by ESMA in the RTS. So in our RTS, we, we don't follow, let's say, the UK approach simply because the mandate for ESMA is not the same. So I hope I replied to, to your question.
Thank you.
So I, I would say last question from Mark and then maybe we can move to the next RTS.
Thank you very much, Mark from sixth group. I'm a bit skeptical about the ability of the consolidated tape to assess whether incoming prices are consistent or questionable. The consolidated tape is neither a regulator nor a market operator and it has, it does not have the full insight over the all the transaction lifecycle. So in the end, the city will have only very limited indices to make an assessment whether an incoming price is good or bad. In particular, I would say the arch example would be illiquid bonds. So, so in my view, it's a very challenging task dedicated to the city to make a qualitative assessment over the quality or the consistency of incoming prices. So I'm not sure that a technical solution is sufficient. It's really about functional to assess the quality of incoming prices. I don't know what's your view on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, for this comment. The CTP will be, will be supervised by, by ESMA. So all the methodology to detect any potential outliers, of course, are, are shared with ESMA and somehow also will be validated by ESMA, which actually is also something similar. For example, it's happening with APIs. So for example, APIs are also supervised by ESMA. The requirement to detect outliers, it's basically, it's also in the requirement for the API. So I would say that there are no big issues in replicating this requirement also for the CTP since the framework is quite similar. Of course, the amount of data is not, is not the same, but I mean, we will select the, the, the best CTP. So in theory, the CTP should, should be able also to, to perform this kind of checks.
Thanks much.
Okay, so I think that we are done. So we can move to the next RTS. So I will give back the floor to my colleagues in the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Stefano. Indeed, we can move to the next topic, which is the revenue redistribution scheme. As you know, MiFID requires the CTP to redistribute a part of its revenues to certain data contributors that meet one or more of the criteria, meaning that too small a trading venue, those trading venues admit into trading young instruments and those trading venues that are pre-trade transparent. How should be done this? The CTP should multiply the annual trading volume generated by the, those elements, by each data contributor, by the, the weight that ESMA has to define and then transform this product into an amount of revenues that is then distributed to the, to the data contributor. In this context, ESMA has a twofold mandate. On one hand, it has, as I said, to define those weights, but also the method for calculating the amount to be redistributed. And on the other hand, it has to define the criteria to suspend and resume the revenue distribution scheme. Before, so the first proposal that we are going to analyze are those related to the methodology. But before making you aware of the proposal, we also wanted to have a general look at the overall process of the revenue distribution. As you know, data contributor have to provide volume data to the CTP. That has to define then at, on the basis of those volume, the, the amount of revenues to be distributed to each data contributor. And ESMA proposed that since the volume are annually determined, also this, this calculation is also performed on an annual basis by 31st of January. Why before 31st of January? Because before there is an additional step that ESMA has to perform, which is the publication of the list of data contributors through the, through the data that it has received by the, by the data contributor itself to the IT system features and fields. This, we propose that this list is published by ESMA by 15th of January and is updated every five years for the contributor that are obliged to contribute, but regularly. So on an annual basis, should include the new data contributors. The second part of the mandate is in relation to the weights. And in, in this context, ESMA has to define the weights so that the revenue distribution scheme becomes an incentive for small trading venues to, to obtain, so that the, the CTP can have a broader coverage. To perform, to define this proposal, ESMA carried out an analysis based on five scenarios. All of them sum up the, the weight to 10. All of them have a decreasing weight for each of the three criteria as determined by level one. And for the third criterion, so for the pre-trade transparency, transparent trading venue, the minimum level was set to 1.5, so that there is a bit of weight also to those element. Then, of course, we considered scenarios of different trading venues. Hopefully it's something realistic because we have a transparent, small SME growth market without a new instrument, a second trading venue, which is a transparent SME with new instrument, and the three other trading venue without a new instrument, which are a dark MTF, a partially transparent MTF and a partially transparent regulated market. The goal here was to define for trading venue B, which is the trading venue meeting all criteria. So being a small trading venue with young instrument and being also pretty transparent to maximize the revenue under the five scenarios. And this was reached under scenario E, which then has made resulted in ESMA proposal of having the weight of 4.5 for the small trading venue, four for the young instrument and 1.5 for the pre-trade transparent trading venue. If we can move then to the second part of the mandate, we can say that this can be subdivided into three other mandates, meaning we have to, we had to define when the revenue distribution scheme can be suspended because the data contributor was found to seriously repeatedly breach data quality requirements. The condition under which the revenue distribution scheme could be resumed and also when there was no breach, how to provide the retained revenues and interest. In this context, we have to see that the CTP, when, despite we have the ESMA criteria defining when a data contributor is in, has repeatedly and seriously breached data quality requirement, the CTP can suspend. So it has to take the decision, make an assessment and take the, the decision to, to suspend or not. In terms of criteria, ESMA has identified two quantitative criteria, which are timeless and quality format and substance of data. When for three consecutive days, a data contributor has failed to some, has submitted later than as close to real time as technically possible or it has sent an incomplete report or a report containing errors and those three reports account for at least 10% of the transaction of submitted in a single day. Clearly, when there is such a breach, ESMA also introduced a clause that exceptional circumstances should be considered when making such an assessment. So that if certain unforeseen or unavoidable circumstances would, besides being breached, the CTP can decide not to suspend. And finally, the two qualitative criteria are in relation, as mentioned before, to the quality of transmission protocol and clock synchronization. And this occur when the data contributor no longer meet the minimum standard requirements of the transmission protocol as defined in the RTS or does no longer synchronize the business clock with the accuracy also determined by the RTS. Finally, ESMA has defined also a procedure that has to be followed when there is the suspension and the resumption of the revenue distribution scheme. And the first step should occur within two days from the decision of taking the suspension, where the CTP should communicate not only to the NCA as required by level one, the, the suspension of the revenue distribution scheme, but also to the data contributor itself. And as in any trial, there is the right of defense. So within one week, the, the data contributor can provide further evidence that, that there was actually no breach. And if the data contributor does so, within one week, the CTP can further decide, can further reassess his decision and decide if to confirm the suspension. And in this case, there is the distribution of the revenue retained to the other data contributor. While if it is revert the suspension, there is the, the, the retained revenues are given back to the data contributor that was found in breach plus interest. And with this, I would stop here for the presentation of the proposal and I would leave the floor maybe for question and especially if you agree with the proposal or if you found certain issue that were overlooked, that are relevant for us in our assessment. Let's see if somebody is breaking the ice of this very sensitive topic. If it's not the case, I think we can move then to the next section and give the floor back to Stefano. Let's see.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Oh yeah, I don't see any questions, so we can continue. So the next item is the review RTS 25, basically requirements on the synchronization of business synchronization of business blocks. So yeah, we, we can go to the slide on the context and the legal mandate. So in light of the review of the old level one intended as MiFID and the article 50 has been removed. It was the article giving the mandate for ESMA to develop an RTS to specify the level of accuracy for the synchronization of business blocks for venues and their participants. So the article 50 has been removed after the review. And the new article 22 of MiFIR include the same requirement, the same mandate for ESMA, with the difference that the scope of the requirement is extended also to other type of entity. So like systematic internalizer, DPs, the APIs, and of course, also the CTP. So next slide, please. In this review of the RTS 25, our intention was, of course, to reassess the approach of the original RTS 25 and to model it on the basis of the new scope extension. In the RTS 25, the requirements for venues were in terms of reference time. So the UTC was requested as reference time in RTS 25. There were also the list of methods of synchronization, which in the RTS 25 were basically two, timing center or satellite systems. And most importantly, in RTS 25, we specified the level of accuracy that the entities in scope of the RTS should comply with. Level of accuracy that was measured as with two figures, that are the maximum divergence from UTC and the timestamp granularity. Also, in RTS 25, ESMA defined different level of accuracy according to the type of entity. So some requirements were applicable to the operators of venues. Some other requirements were applicable indeed instead to participants. As well as several requirements were applicable according to the business type of TP participants. So in the review of the RTS 25, we wanted to read up this requirement also to the new entity. And also, we explored the possibility to revise the existing requirement applicable to operators of venues of their or their participants. So in the next slide, indeed, we have the content of our consultation paper. We confirmed the provision in terms of reference time. So UTC, it's still the reference time according to RTS 25. We also confirmed the methods of synchronization. What we wanted to explore as a revision of the existing requirement is the timestamp granularity for the operators of venues with low latency system. So according to our analysis, we think that thanks also to the evolution of technologies in specific activities, in particular high frequency trading, we realized that would be, let's say, more feasible to increase the timestamp granularity of these operators to 0.1 microseconds. Also, yeah, of course, it's a consultation. So we would like to hear from the market if this requirement is feasible or not. If you go to the next slide, we confirm also the level of accuracy for members of venues. The new requirements in terms of level of accuracy for the new entities in scope are the following. So for APIs and the CTP, we wanted to include in the RTS the same requirements in terms of the clock synchronization existing already in the RTS 13. RTS 13, that is indeed under review. My colleagues later will explain more what's going on for this RTS. So our intention for RTS 25 was just to remove this requirement from RTS 13 and to copy into the RTS 25. So CTP and APIs should have a maximum divergence of 1 millisecond. For systematic internalized, our intention is to introduce the same requirement existing for the operators of venues. This is supported by the fact that the business of systematic internalizer, it's quite similar to the one of operator of trading venues. So also, same business means also same risk. And so we introduce it the same requirement. So for systematic internalizer, we just need to refer to the existing requirement for the operators of venues. For DPs, since we believe they have a less complex business model with respect to systematic internalizer, we impose less stringent requirements. So as you can see from the table in the slide, for the PE, the maximum divergence from UTC would be just 1 millisecond like for APIs and CTP. So also here, I would open the floor for any question from. Yes, Joao, please?
Apologies, I think this question was possibly for Erica, and I missed my turn. So apologies for that. But with regards to, so my name is Jostro, and I'll look after Trade Echo, which is the London Stock Exchange Group's API. With regards to submitting the trade reports to the CTP as a data contributor, do you have any intentions of adding a field to RTS 1 and RTS 2, which will be where we can include the timestamp of when we receive the message from the DPE or from the aside from the investment firm? Because if we don't have a way of demonstrating that to the CTP, and the trade reports are submitted late by our reporting firms, then could that not be seen as the API being late submitting the trade reports to the CTP? An apology is going backwards, Stefan.
I think this is, if I'm not mistaken, in the input-output data RTS. And if I remember well, it should be included, at least the timing at which it was received or sent. So there should be a way to demonstrate if the data was received late by the data contributor.
Okay, perfect.
But I will make sure that this is there, but it should be, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, perfect. So what are you saying?
Yeah, because it's true, as my colleague said, it's something in the consultation paper for the RTS input output data. I mean, in the set of fields that data contributors should send to the CTP that are functional for the output, we don't have the information on what time the data contributors, which in this case, I guess you are referring to APIs, because for venues, yeah, for the V's, the time at which the information is received, I think it's available. So it's, yeah, it's true, it's something that we didn't include in the set of input data that data contributors should submit to the CTP that would be functional to produce the output data. But indeed, in the consultation paper on input-output data, we put a question where we ask if the data contributor should submit additional information to the CTP that are not functional for the output part, but are functional to any other activities that CTP should do. One of this kind of information is indeed at what time the data contributors, in this case, the APIs, received the data from, for example, from the investment firm. So it's true, it's something that we didn't specify in the consultation paper, but we put a question and in will find a report, we will be more specific on that.
That's perfect. Thank you, Stefan. Thanks, Erica. Appreciate it.
I see a question from Ashish.
Ashish, hi. I just wanted to check, will this have impact on RTS 22 as well? To report times in microseconds or nanoseconds?
Sorry, can you refresh your question, because I didn't get it.
Sorry, yep. One is that capturing time in nanosecond, but will it have impact on like consuming this data from venues in nanoseconds and reporting as part of transaction reporting?
Actually, I mean, the review of RTS 22, it will be done by ESMA at a later stage. So I would say that at the moment, I don't know how to reply to this question. Because also RTS 22, it's under review. But I mean, it's something that we will do at a later stage in the course of year. So I'm sorry, but at the moment, I cannot reply to this question, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I don't know if there are any other question from the audience? So if it's not the case, so if it's the case of no question, I don't know, I asked my colleagues from the ESMA office if we should go for a coffee break or if we continue with the presentations?
Yeah, we would take a coffee break for 13 minutes, 12 minutes, and we convene half past.
Okay, thank you very much to everybody for all the comments. Good afternoon, everyone. I think we arrived to RTS 13. So if, I think we can go already to the next slide. Thank you. So let's start to cover this item, starting from, let's say, the previous legal framework. And then let's look at what the MiFIR review brought. So in terms of what is now, because at this stage is still the applicable RTS, there is only one RTS that covers the authorization organizational requirements for data reporting service providers, including, I mean, all the type of DRSPs. So APA, ARMS, and CTP. And this RTS is RTS 14. So authorization, organizational requirements, and publication arrangements. These are three separate chapters within RTS 13, and they cover all the DRSPs. And attached to it, let's say, we have the ITS for these entities in case they want to apply and get authorized as a DRSP. With the MiFIR review, let's say, things will change. And there will be a distinct Level 2 provisions that will separate APA and ARMS on one side and CTPs in another side. And the same would apply for the ITSs. So what happens now at Level 2 drafting is that we need to amend the RTS 14 and create a new RTS for CTPs on authorization. And at the same times, amend the current ITS and create a new ITS for the CTP authorization. If we go to the second slide, and here you can see the analysis. As I said before, the current RTS 13 that covers all the DRSPs is divided in these three chapters: authorization, organizational requirements, publication arrangements. Now, we need to split them in two. On the left, you have RTS 13 that will cover only APA and ARMS. And on the right, you have the new RTS on CTP authorization. And based on the mandate that we have in MiFIR and in Level 1, there is an impact on the chapters that we will keep or not in the two RTSs. So if we take, for instance, RTS 13, we have for APA and ARMS, we have a clear mandate on authorization and organizational requirements. While for publication arrangement, and this is something that, for instance, my colleagues, Stefano, mentioned before, this will be moved in other, let's say, data-related RTSSs. For instance, the one on input and output data. On the right side, the RTS on CTP authorization. Here, the mandate that we have received from the MiFIR review only covers authorization. There is an article on Level 1 that covers the organizational requirements for CTP, but there is no specific mandate on organizational requirements nor on publication arrangement. So if we go to the proposals and we keep this split between APA and ARMS and CTP authorization only, for APA and ARMS, we will keep the authorization organizational requirements. As I mentioned before, the publication arrangements will be moved to other RTSSs. And if we concentrate on the authorization and organizational requirements, in practice, there are two crucial tasks that we need to implement. The first one is that being on the RTS only on APA and ARMS, we simply need to remove any reference on the CTPs that at this stage is still there. And then we need to include and revise the APA and ARMS impact on DORA. DORA, the Digital Operational Resilience Act, I think that you are all aware that will become applicable in 2025. And DORA is transversal, supersedes all the sectoral legislations. And it will impact in practice articles, the articles that are on outsourcing, security, business continuity that are contained at this stage in RTS 13. And if we move to CTP authorization, no, sorry, on CTP authorization RTS, here, as I said before, we do not have mandates to draft the RTS in the publication arrangements or organizational requirements. But we have it for or organizational requirements, but we have it for authorization. In this case, uh, the objective that we want to achieve is that once, uh, the C T P is selected and go through the authorization process, we want that the selection criteria that allow the entity to be selected and then authorized are always met by the C T P, should be, uh, as variable and criteria that should be always met by, by the C T P. Otherwise, there is the risk that if it does not comply at all times, the authorization licensing of, of the C T P may be not granted anymore. But at the same times, there are some authorization criteria that already exist in R T S thirteen that will be replicated in the new C T P R T S and authorization, but some others that we will include it as new authorization criteria, for instance, on organization, ownership, governance, these are all new authorization criteria that we're including for the C T P, because they needs to be reflect the selection criteria that are in, in level one. And, and this is, I think, my final point, similar to what happened with A P A and arms and the impact of D O R A that it is on R T S fourteen, this will also be applied on C T Ps. Then, if we move to the, to the questions, here, you have the question that you have found in the consultation paper, but in general, we would like to hear from you. First, if your final or your feedback regarding this overall approach that we are taking in revising R T S thirteen and splitting basically in two, one for A P As and arms and one for C T Ps. We would like to understand in the area of conflict of interest. At this stage, we have one, the article in the current R T S thirteen that covers the possible conflict of interest. If you see that article fit as for the new mandate, or if you have any other suggestion, and similarly, for instance, for D O R A, if you have feedback on the impact of D O R A on the R T S thirteen and non-C T P authorization. I stop here and happy to see if there are questions from the audience. I do see any questions, so if everything is clear, perhaps we can continue with the next item in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. And indeed, now turning to the last topic of today's hearing, which are the criteria we will use to assess the applicants for the C T Ps, but actually, move to this one. Um, so as you know, we have a new task at E S M A, and as mentioned by Verona Ross in her opening remarks, it's a challenging one, which is the one to select suitable providers for each of the three consolidated tapes, so for bonds, for equity and for O T C derivatives. Um, and in the preparation for this new task, we are really committed to engaging with you, with all the interested stakeholders in the, in the C T P. We have done so through the two workshops, that's why I mentioned that the C T Chair that we organized in February and March, and we are now doing so with this consultation paper and this public hearing, bearing in mind that it's, you know, new territory to consult on something that will be in effect, it's enduring procedure eventually, so really happy to also get innovative feedback from, from you. Um, the assessment of those future applicants will be based, on the one hand, on the EU rules for procurement that are specified in the financial regulation, and on the other hand, based on the list of criterias that are in M I F I, more particularly in paragraph two, Article twenty seven, D eight, and we have there fourteen criterias that we need to assess. So in order to take all of these elements into account, we will sequence our assessment around the three types of criterias you have here on the screen. Uh, the first ones are the exclusion criterias. Uh, they are defined in the financial regulation, um, and they are meant to indeed check if the participants' tenders are allowed to participate in the procedure. Uh, examples are cases of fraud, cases of corruption, cases of money laundering. Should those have arise, of course, the participants will not be allowed to participate, and this is something we'll assess in, in the first phase of the selection. Also, to be assessed in the first phase of the selection are what we call selection criterias. Um, so the idea is that to check whether the applicants have the necessary capacity to indeed operate the tape, um, and we have selected, if I'm not mistaken, five of them as part of the fourteen criterias that are listed in M I F I. Um, so that's for the first phase exclusion selection altogether. Um, the ones that will pass this first phase would then move to the second phase, which is the one when we're going to evaluate the award criteria. Um, and, and these ones, they will be rated on a scale, and the idea is to select for each of those award criteria, um, you know, the, the best of the offers and to score it accordingly, depending on, you know, the scoring methodology we will, we will create, because indeed, from this, you know, bucketing of criterias into three, there are two main tasks that we need to, to do now in, in further specifying the, the assessment. Uh, one is to distinguish which criteria in M I F I should be selection and which should be awarded, so which one should be assessed on a yes, no basis, minimum requirement, and which one should be assessed on a, on a scale. And the second one is indeed to define what are those minimum requirements for, for selection criteria that you need to pass, and, and how do you score, and what method do you use to score the award criteria? So just wanted to play that back to you as, as a context, you, you will have read it also in the, in the consultation paper. Um, maybe moving to the, to the next slide and indeed running you through our proposed approach for each of the fourteen criterias that are listed in M I F I. Um, for the C P and for this presentation, we have grouped them in, in five thematic categories for convenience in presenting, also because there, there seems to be, you know, interlinkages between the different criterias within these categories, but in the way we assess them, they will be assessed each of them separately, separately on their own merits. There will be links, you know, between the, the criterias, but we will need to go through each of the fourteen criteria separately and to assess applicants based on those fourteen criteria separately. Um, again, really running specifically through them, organizational requirements, we mentioned them in the presentation just before by David Day. The idea is that is in the first phase during the selection, check that indeed the applicants intend to comply with the level one text, Article twenty, twenty seven, D B, and the proposed R T S. We know there will be a question in terms of the, the timing given, we will need to launch the first procedure for bonds at the same time that we will deliver our final report on, on the R T Ss, but the idea is really to look ahead and looking ahead when the C T P for bonds will be authorized, the R T S will be enforced, so the idea is really to assess the intended compliance, and then, of course, compliance at the time of, of selection. Um, so selection criteria, the second selection criteria is the one that will be applicable for those applicants that will apply jointly, and there we need to make sure that, you know, there is an added value for this application, um, and that the potential conflict of interests between, you know, the joint applicants are effectively managed and identified. Um, so that also will be selected, sorry, assessed in the, in the first phase, and then moving to the second phase on, on this block of governance organizational requirements will be a more qualitative scoring of the governance structure proposed by, by the, the C T P applicants, in particular, looking at how they involve data contributors and data users in, in their governance. Uh, so there will be indeed interested to, to hear views during the consultation on, on, on how to assess that in, in more detail. Um, moving to the second big thematic category is the one on cost and revenue redistribution. Uh, there again, one selection criteria, which is the existence or not of a revenue redistribution for the C T P for bonds. So this is a criteria that will not feature in the selection procedure for equity or for derivative, it's only for bonds, and there, the text is quite clear. Um, it, it, it's a matter of assessing whether there is a revenue distribution or not, it's not a matter of assessing the level of redistribution or indeed does the features first of yes, no, hence the selection criteria. Um, and in the second phase, we move to two award criterias, um, the first one on costs and the second one on fees and reasonable commercial basis. We know it's, 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 of course, two criterias that are quite linked one to the other. Um, on expenditure and costs, the idea is to assess not only ongoing costs, but also the sort of one-off initial expenditure costs, uh, and, and the idea is also to be sure that we don't necessarily go for, you know, the, the lowest cost option, because we also want the C T P to be able to maintain the quality of its services for five years, and that also includes investments. So we would, you know, not just be looking at the lower cost option, but also one that is able to remain of high quality across, across the whole period. Um, looking at fees, um, there are, let's say, a twofold assessment here. The first one is on the simplicity of the, of the fee structure, we'll be looking at, you know, the fee tiering, different fee types, different licensing models, aiming always to have more points for the, the ones that would present a simpler structure. Um, and given the C T P will also be subject to the provision on the requirements, sorry, on, on the provision of information and data on a reasonable commercial basis, we'd want to assess the intended compliance with, with indeed these requirements, both at level one, Article thirteen, and in the R T S that, that we discussed this morning, with again the same caveat, that the R T S should be in place when we authorize the C T P and when we will be doing the selection, we'll assess the intended compliance. Uh, that's for the second big category, cost, fees, revenue distribution. Um, the third big category is, um, associating two, two very important criterion indeed, the ability to process data and the dissemination speed. Uh, there, of course, we'll be expecting to hear from applicants what technologies they put in place to receive the data, to consolidate it, to disseminate it, looking to have a qualitative assessment and, and to award the, the most advanced technologies in this regard. Um, the second is dissemination speed. Uh, of course, there we are very aware of the fact that there might be different ways of looking at speed depending on the, on, on the asset class, and in particular, if you look at the bonds, you only have post-trade and transparency, and equity, you have pre- and post-trade transparency, so we'll, of course, you know, add this nuance in the assessment. Um, and this is one that we will also want to look in conjunction with another criteria that is in the next slide, which is the one on data quality, um, ensuring that, you know, there is no arbitrage between, on the one hand, data quality, on the other hand, speed, that we want to have, you know, an appropriate level of, of, of quality and expectations on, on those two, on those two criterias. So indeed, data quality will be assessed also in this second phase, this award criteria phase. Um, and in the first phase, we will also assess two other, we suggested to assess two, two other criterias linked to data quality and, and modern interface record keeping. Um, so on modern interface connectivity, um, we focus on four aspects, reliability, scalability, low latency, security. Uh, the idea there again is to have minimum requirements that the applicants should pass before moving to the, to the more qualitative stage, so hence the selection criteria. Um, and same for record keeping requirements, where we will assess the intended compliance with level one text. Um, bearing in mind that at this stage, there is no level two text on this one, so again, you need to intend to comply with a minimum requirements in M I F I on record keeping to be able to pass to the second phase. Uh, last but not least, um, those criterias related to resilience, cybersecurity, energy consumption, uh, there again, you know, phasing, first phase, looking at resilience, and in particular, focus on D O R A requirements. Um, bearing in mind that we wouldn't want to have an applicant going to the second phase that would not comply with all that is required to comply under, under D O R A, uh, so that's what we would put under the resilience criterion. And then moving to the business continuity cyber risk, um, there we would be looking at what would the applicant do on top of minimum D O R A requirements. Um, we will also look at, you know, how they would want to apply them in practice and and look at the quality of this compliance, but the idea is really to reward those that would provide additional commitments, additional measures when it comes to business continuity cyber risk. And to conclude, the criteria on, on energy consumption, where there we would expect applicants to estimate a metric that we call the power user effectiveness, um, and so estimate this metric for the next five years, and based on that, see how efficient they are in, in their use of energy when it comes to a providing the, the core services of the, of the C T P. Uh, I'll stop here, realize it's quite dense, and it's a lot of information that you also would have seen in the consultation paper, um, and really happy to take questions at this stage. These are suggestions for, you know, topics that could be of relevance, the provenance, involvement of users and contributors in, in the C T P governance, the question around the fee model insipidity, the balance between speed and data quality, as mentioned, but of course, any other questions you might ask at this stage. Starting with Alan.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes, thank you very much. I would have two, two questions regarding this selection criterion. Um, the first would be, um, do you plan to consider the diversity of users' needs in your selection, meaning that for some users, speed latency may be the most critical um, uh, feature that they would look for in a C T P, but for others, it would be the cost, and they would not be as sensitive to latency, and therefore selecting several C T P with different profiles, some more quality latency focused and others more focused on cost would be beneficial for all users, but the first questions. And the second is, do you have any selection criteria to assess what I would call the concentration risk? Or, you know, we are working in, in a market where, which is, we have an oligopoly of market data provider, and from a user, user of data point of view, diversification from this oligopoly would be beneficial. So is it a criteria that you have included in your selection process?
Maybe we could then take a few questions if we have more, otherwise I'll start answering this one. Ignorant team.
Yes, thank you for, for the further explanation on the assessment criteria. You already shared like for the different example for, on some parameter, what you were expected to be in place when finding the answer to the tender, or what you expect to explain what will be implemented potentially at a future chase, that would be definitely very helpful for the city candidate, if it's something that you could clarify further on a parameter by parameter basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ignorant team, and I see Nina as well.
Uh, yes, Adol, Nina from I C M A again. Um, just a question relating to D O R A and I think also what was mentioned in the previous section about R T S thirteen and the new R T S for C T Ps here and D O R A. Would you expect the C T P to comply with, with all of D O R A, just in general, or are there any specific elements that have to be taken into consideration specifically? I think when we went to the consultation first, then what, that these were some initial questions asked by members, maybe just for clarity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maybe I'll take these three ones, and it's gonna, but more questions from, from participants. Uh, taking the reverse order on D O R A compliance, um, the C T P, the, the three C T Ps will be D R S Ps that are, that are reporting service providers, I'm always confused with this one. I'm always confused with this one. And DORA applies to data, the RSPs. I wouldn't be able to tell you at this stage whether it's all of DORA, whether it's only part of DORA and how it works in practice. But what is sure is that DORA already applies to the RSPs. CTPs will be the RSPs, therefore, DORA will apply. What that mean in practice, and maybe David, you have more detail.
No, I think that your question goes in the right direction in the sense that, as Climon just said, DORA will apply to CTPs as well as the other data reporting service providers. So, which is why, for instance, on RTS 13, you should expect that that one is DORA plus the relevant Level 2 legislations applies and will apply to CTPs.
Okay, thank you.
Now maybe turning to the question from Eglantine on the expected level of preparedness or what should be in place when somebody goes to the selection procedure? This is not something we want to mandate in detail. Of course, we will want the applicants to be sufficiently serious to want to provide the consolidated tapes. But at the same time, we can also understand that it would be difficult for them to put in place everything before being selected and authorized. So it's a delicate balance there. And that's why we didn't want to sort of have very specific guidance on what it means. However, you know, this is why we highlight the question of intended compliance. We know that not all the Level 1, Level 2, not all the Level 2 framework will be in place at the moment of the selection. But we would want the person or the persons that would apply to cover sufficient grounds so that we are sufficiently confident that if they are selected and thereafter authorized, they can comply with all the requirements organizational and in particular, when it comes to the level of preparedness. I realize it's a bit middle-of-the-road answer. But you know, this is something where we don't want to say uniquely everything ready.
Definitely absolutely, like this is not the full scope. Thank you.
Thanks to you. Going back to the question from Alan on competition, I quote him, concentration risk, oligopoly, quoting the question, not saying that I agree with them. When it comes to this competition aspect, they are in a way touched on this criteria on joint application. So if we have a joint application and if we have somebody coming to the selection procedure, putting together different entities, we would want those people to explain why they need to apply jointly. What is the added value of applying jointly? And to specify how they want to manage conflict of interest, identify and manage conflict of interest between those two entities. This is what we have in the Level 1 text, which we are following quite closely. And this is what we will assess indeed during the selection procedure. And to your question about whether we could select several CTPs depending on different user needs. Well, first, the Level 1 text specifically says that we can only select one suitable provider per asset class. And when it comes to indeed the balance between speed on the one hand, cost on the other hand, and how different users might have different needs. I think we are aware of this. However, I think it is also within the competence of the different applicants and indeed the CTP eventually to be able to cater for the needs of their potential users. So I think we wouldn't want to, how to say that, anticipate which would be the specific user types and therefore have a very specific approach to speed or to cost. We would rather want to leave that open for participant to the selection procedure to present their offers on that. Bearing in mind that indeed, you know, this is something that we would pay attention to very closely, both in terms of costs, in terms of fee schedule and also in terms of speed, because there are again criterias that are in the Level 1 text. Again, I realize it's a diplomatic answer. But hopefully, it provides a bit of clarity to the questions you had.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if this prompted more question at this stage from any of the participants? Anastasios.
Hello, Anastasios Karanavus Kramatmy. Thank you for the comprehensive presentation. A question regarding the revenue redistribution for the bond consolidated tape. ESMA proposes that this will be a selection criteria and will be assessed in isolation from any other criteria. However, there will be considerable costs for the CTP if a revenue distribution mechanism will actually apply. And arguably, there will be knock-on effects for the users of the bond tape that will be reflected at the level of fees that they will be supposed to pay. So what will be ESMA's approach when scoring this criterion against the rest selection criteria? Are there any thoughts to be assessed together with the rest criteria on fees and licenses?
Thank you very much, Anastasios. I was just reading through the constitution on this one. Indeed, there is a link between revenue distribution and the cost that will be by the city. Again, going back to the Level 1 text, it says very clearly, we need to assess the existence of arrangements for revenue distribution for bonds. So to us, it reads as a yes/no, do they exist or they do not exist, which we were doing the first phase. But indeed, in the second phase, we'll have a more comprehensive or holistic assessment of the costs as part of the specific criterias there. And if indeed, the applicants that are moving forward to the second stage have a revenue distribution arrangement in place and that it has a significant impact on the cost, it will have an impact on the scoring of the cost criteria eventually. But we will not want to have a look at, you know, the specific feature of these arrangements for revenue distribution insofar as, you know, in and of themselves. We will want to have a look at them indeed as part of a more holistic assessment of the cost of the, indeed, of the fees. But probably more, it's going to be within the cost bucket. Let's put it that way, that it will have an impact during our qualitative assessment in the second phase of this award criteria. So indeed, in short, we fully acknowledge that there is a link there. But we will not have a look at the detail of this revenue distribution in isolation. I don't know if this. Do we have any other questions at this stage? And we'll look forward to your written replies to the consultation on this topic and on all of the other topics. And then maybe I'll give a photo Charlotte for complete remarks.
Thanks a lot, Climon. I believe we covered a lot today. We started with Verina setting a bit of a framework and putting the MiFIR review in the broader context of further developing the new capital markets. Then in the morning, we discussed on non-equity transparency focusing on bonds, reasonable commercial basis and then reference data. And in the afternoon, we focus on everything linked to the CTP, notably the technical standards and what is presented by Climon, our general approach on the CTP selection procedure. I know it's been a lot and it's a lot of substance that we covered today. And you heard many speeches and you heard a lot from my colleagues. So don't worry, I will keep it very brief. I don't intend to give a very long speech. But I would like first of all to thank all the speakers of today's event, so notably Verina Rodrigo and Amy for their willingness to speak and to share their thoughts. Okay, that was the board for that. Then I also want to thank all my colleagues at ESMA for putting the effort to give the presentations. I hope we managed to explain you in a clear manner what our ideas were and what the rationale behind our proposals was. I also thank Paul and Climon in particular for preparing this hearing and spending quite some time on it. And then last but not least, I would also thank all of you for attending the hearing, for also providing us with your input citing on some areas, we got some feedback on things we need to further look into. I have to admit, I was hoping that we would get a bit more feedback because I think on some proposals, we are a bit in the dark and we don't know exactly whether we hit the right balance or not. At the same time, I appreciate that a lot of this is very technical and that we are still in the early days of the consultation period. Hence, I encourage you to provide or to answer then to the consultation papers. We are clearly looking forward to read your answers. Please keep in mind that the deadline for the two consultation papers is 28th of August. So we didn't do this during your summer holidays. It's more that we only have nine months for delivering the proposal, which is very tight. But we wanted still to give you three months to provide feedback, which means that we entered a bit, that is unfortunate period. When replying to the CTP, I would encourage you to provide us with as much rational and background as possible so that we can understand why you are in favor or against a proposal. Please also, when you have alternatives, please explain them or feel free to share any data. I think as more data we get, the better it is also for us to refine our proposals and improve them. And then just to recall, then we aim at delivering all these final reports and those technical standards to the commission by end of this year. And then we are also required then by law to start the selection procedure for the CTP more or less at the same time. I think by end of December is MiFIR review is saying. Then also just to flag it, as also said by Verina this morning, there are a few more consultation papers in the pipeline. So I think the next one should hit you reasonably soon. We're looking forward also to your answers on that. And you will find more information on this on our dedicated website. So there is a MiFIR website where we put all the information and the links to the various consultation papers. And we will keep it regularly updated. And with that, thanks again to everyone and have a nice afternoon.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.